Thank you, folks. Thank you, folks. Looks like everybody missed the planning board. Everybody's here.
Everybody's here.
The September 3, 2025 regular planning board meeting is called to order. This is to advise that the notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known agenda of such a meeting was promptly posted in a public place reserved for such or similar announcements on August 19, 2025, and transmitted to the Times, Princeton, Packer, and West Windsor and Plainsboro News on August 19, 2025, and filed with the township clerk on August 19, 2025. Please call the roll.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Lavaro?
Yes.
Mr. Shektow?
Here.
Mr. Pankov?
I'm since.
Mr. Bae?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilman Whitfield?
Here.
Mayor Marte?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Obermann?
Here.
And Chairman Carr?
Here. We have a quorum. Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up to the public. If you'd list to speak on non-agenda, non-pending items, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing none. Minutes from 2021 and we'll do well minutes from May 2025, May 21, 2025, and June 25, 2025. Are there any amendments or changes other than typos? Anybody?
Motion to approve the minutes of May 21st?
Second. Okay, motion by Curtis, second by Annis. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Okay.
I have to abstain.
Yes, Alan is abstaining.
Abstain.
I abstain.
Okay. You can see who can have got it. Thank you. Okay. Minutes from June 2000, June 25, 2025, any amendments, changes, explanations, context, other than typos? Anybody? Want to obtain a motion to approve the minutes from June 25, 2025?
Sue move.
Move by the mayor, second by?
Second.
I'm sorry, Sue?
Second.
Yes, Sue, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain is Jordan.
Abstain.
Annis, Alan, and Rob. Thank you. Minutes approved. Thank you. Okay. Next up on the agenda is the resolution PB 21-10. This is the Carnegie Center West Corman Suites, request for extension of approval. Does anybody have any issues with the request for extension? Anybody? No?
Motion to approve the resolution for PB 21-10, BXP Carnegie Center, Carnegie owner LLC.
Second. Okay. Motion by Curtis, second by Annis. Please call the roll for a vote.
Ms. Billabaca?
Yes.
Will you be the second to pass?
Abstain.
Mr. Bae?
Yes.
Sorry, but.
No, she.
I have abstained because I wasn't there.
Just flip over the back. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Bae?
Yes.
Mayor Marte?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Obermann?
Yes.
And Chairman Carr?
Yes. Okay, approved, resolution approved to extend Corman Suites, PB 21-10. Thank you. Okay, next up is the application PB 25-06, Princeton Executive Park, Phase 3, Fogo de Chao Restaurant, final major site plan, northeast corner of Meadow Road and US 1. Is the applicant here and represented?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Microphone.
Everyone hear me? It needs to be a little higher.
Say in advance, good evening. I'm Martina Bailey. I'm the board attorney this evening, but I review the notice packet. It's in order, so the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you.
All short people here.
I guess I do now. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Ron Shimanoitz from the firm of Hut Shimanoitz and Plucker here on behalf of the applicant Fogo de Chao Coriscaria LLC. We're before you tonight seeking final major site plan approval for the restaurant pad site known as Phase 3 of the overall development. In addition to final site plan approval, we're seeking certain design waivers. Just by way of real quick background, this board approved the overall development back in 2020. That included preliminary and final major site plan and subdivision approval for Phases 1 and 2, and preliminary major site plan approval for Phases 3 and 4. The overall development comprises 656 multifamily residential units being developed as the lofts, 130-room hotel, a 1,600-square-feet retail space, and the restaurant pad, which is the subject of tonight's application. We were back before you in 2023 for an amendment. We made some modifications to the hotel approval to eliminate the rooftop and some other changes. The applicant tonight, as I stated, is seeking final site plan approval for the restaurant pad, which you have already granted preliminary approval. So with the final site plan request tonight, we're following the preliminary with a couple of minor changes. The main change is the building's being rotated to face Route 1. There are some other modifications which you'll hear about from our experts, but that's the essence of the application. There are, there is some signage that's being proposed, both facade signage and monument sign. Those signs implicate some design waivers in terms of sign area, letter height, and sign height. And that is, that's really the essence of the relief we're seeking from you tonight. I do have with me five witnesses. Each of them are relatively brief, so we hope to get through this pretty quickly just by way of preview for the chair. I have with me James Talarico, who is Senior Director of Development for the Briad Group, which is the main developer of the overall site, particularly the restaurant and hotel portion. So he's just going to give a little background of where we're at with the overall development. Matt Wells is a representative from Fogo as to operations of the restaurant. Sean Delaney is our site engineer from Bowman Engineering. Jeff Lynn is our licensed architect. He'll show you the architectural package. And Julie Kobeski from the Lillow Bauer. And Carmen is our licensed landscape architect. And that is who will be presenting tonight. We do, of course, have the several review letters and are prepared to address them. Unless there's any other housekeeping or questions, I'm prepared to call my first witness.
Why don't we swear all of your witnesses in at once? If anyone who's going to testify tonight could just raise your right hand.
It would be those five folks that I mentioned.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth? Lovely, so sworn. And if, as you come up, if you could just introduce yourself again and give us the benefit of your credentials if you're testifying as an expert.
You're a little bit taller than me. Sure. My name's James Talarico. I work for the Briad Group. We're also Briad Development LLC. Address is 78 Ockner Parkway, Livingston, New Jersey, 07039. I am the Senior Director of Development, and we are the owner of the application that's in front of you tonight. We are leasing the demise premise for the restaurant, which is the final approval we're seeking tonight to Fogo de Chao, which they will present their application for the modifications that they're making just for the restaurant pad. I was here previously. It's been a little bit. I know some of you and some of you look like new faces, but we received preliminary and final approval for the hotel portion, which we are planning to develop, but has been, I don't want to say derailed, but somewhat been complicated with financing. And we've pivoted some to try to get the restaurant going first at this point in time until we're able to secure final financing for the actual hotel itself, which we do intend to build. But again, the application tonight is for final approval for the restaurant. There are minor changes. Most of them are administrative, but there are some design waivers that they will present to you tonight. If you have any questions for me as the owner's rep, I'd be kindly, kindly answer any questions you may have. Sure. The overall development is pretty much owned by Garden Homes, which is developing all the residential on both Phases 1 and I believe it's Phase 4, is it? Phase 4. They also have on Phase 3, they own the retail portion of the development, which is the two retail paths that were approved preliminarily, along with our restaurant, which is part of Phase 3. So we're only slightly modifying a portion of Phase 3. What's been constructed to date by Garden Homes is their Phase 2 development, which is their, which is their residential on the one side of Meadow Road, along with the parking easement, which services our lot, which is off premises, but they've developed. They've also installed all of the utilities that service our lot as part of an agreement we had with Garden Homes, so that when we were ready to construct our pad, we did not have to go on their property. So all of the utilities, there's some final paving that still needs to be done on the parking easement, which is currently being worked out. But everything, for the most part, that's necessary for access and servicing our application has been constructed offsite.
No.
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next witness is Mr. Matt Wells.
I'm Matt Wells, speaking on behalf of Fogo de Chão. I'm the Vice President of Construction. Just real briefly, if you're not familiar with Fogo, the concept is churrasco, which is a barbecue style rooted in Brazil. It's proteins cooked on an open flame. We serve about a dozen protein, different proteins, including seafood, as well as paired with a market table that has quite a variety of seasonal vegetables, fruits, salads, and things like that for offerings. We are relatively new to New Jersey. This will be our fourth location in the state. We're extremely excited about this location. This will be our first, what we consider prototype building, which we're building here freestanding. We've converted a few locations, but this is our first, our first ground-up location that we're very excited about.
I've been to the one in New Orleans, and I've been to one in Paramus.
Great.
And in Brazil, I've been to the real Chosco.
That's awesome. I have not been yet, but that's, that's great.
Now, just a few operational questions.
Sure.
Came on. Would you let us pick this real quick? What if you propose the hours of operation later?
Hours of operation or 11 to 11? Deliveries are normally three to four days a week, depending on volume of the restaurant, typically early morning hours. Generally, a box truck or similar.
What do you expect in terms of employees per shift?
Employees per shift is, is give or take 30? It really depends on the restaurant. Yes.
With regard to the outdoor, we already have this being proposed for outdoor dining. Will there be any music or performances or anything like that?
There will. It's generally just ambient music for atmosphere. From time to time, we'll do, as far as any performances, it's usually live music, maybe a performer on a bar stool with a guitar or something similar. It's not a full orchestra or anything by that means. It's more for experience to go with, with your dinner. Exactly. Yeah, exactly.
In terms of the signage, facade signage and monument signage, do you know what the hours of illumination will be for the signage?
So the, the hours we generally would go with, especially on a thoroughfare like this, would be, it's, it's all on a program clock, so we can program it to come on an hour before sunset, so it's not burning too long. I would probably start with a 2:00 AM shut-off just to capture as much traffic, but it's, it's all adjustable for.
Anybody?
Yeah, I have a question for you. I'm also familiar with churrasco in Brazil and San Francisco. How do you control the odor coming out of the, out of the kitchen? The smoke?
The exhaust system.
You know.
Exhaust system.
Use scrubbers or?
We do, not for this location, we would not.
And why is that?
It's the, the fan's going to be mounted on the roof, and generally, we see that the exhaust fan is going to pull it to the roof, and the air is going to dissipate the smell.
All right, so you don't see that impacting the hotel or the residences?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, how does the size of the West Windsor location compare to the other three that you have in New Jersey?
Very similar. We're, we're give or take, depending on, some of those were what we call conversions, so we went into existing real estate, but they're all about 8,000 to this one here. This is give or take 8,500 square feet. That's, that's kind of our, our sweet spot. When I say this, this one is what we consider our prototype. We're building the building, so we control more of the overall design, whereas if we're going into an existing, we look for a certain size, but then we're, we get a bit more limited by the four walls. But the ones here are comparable in size.
Will there be any drive-through?
No drive-through.
Okay. Anybody else? Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, so on the treatment works approval, we currently have a treatment works approval for the project itself. The amount of gallonage allotted for that originally was for the hotel and the rooftop restaurant that we had originally gotten approved. Currently, we're just building the restaurant. So at this point in time, because all of the mains have been installed, we've technically fulfilled the requirements of the gallonage that's necessary, which this restaurant is under that overall gallonage. So therefore, we're going to utilize the same existing TWA, and we're going to amend that TWA for the hotel when we're about to go under construction with that. So I would ask that if this application is approved, that you could make a condition of the approval that we can utilize the existing TWA, because we're under the gallonage that's already been allotted to us, and the additional we'll get, and we will not be able to file for a building permit until we have that updated TWA for the hotel portion. It's slightly over what was allotted to us, but again, it, it doesn't make a difference because gallons is gallons. I hope I clarified that enough so people understood. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Certainly. My name is Sean, S E A N Delaney, D E L A N Y, Licensed Professional Engineer in the state of New Jersey, and Licensed Professional Planner in the state of New Jersey. A graduate of NJIT in 1999 with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. Have appeared before several planning and zoning boards throughout the thing. I appeared before this board as a planner during the last approval for the hotel and the preliminary approval for the restaurant. On, I've done engineering and planning testimony, planner since 2008. License is in good standing. I'm a principal with Bowman Consulting out of our freehold office.
Thank you. Anybody?
We can start, you know, word up, insult, you could describe what that exhibit is by title, date, compare, and we're going to mark that exhibit.
Certainly. Exhibit A1 is a site plan rendering of Phase 3 Fogo de Chao Restaurant prepared by the office dated 8/29/2025, depicting the whole restaurant site, the location where the hotels go, and some of the other improvements on aerial map for the property and surrounding areas.
Thank you, Sean. I mean, it's hard to oversee the things we're through, site, and particularly local modifications.
Certainly. So property is identified as block 9, block 12.01. It's 4.13 acres in size. That hasn't changed. So PMN 1, land makes use of neighborhood as well. And as mentioned, this is Phase 3 of the final for the restaurant. The product poses an 8,280 square foot restaurant with 1,300 square feet of an outdoor seating area, totaling 298 seats, 235 indoor and 63 outside. There's no change to the lot area with their depth that was previously improved. A slight modification was set out along Route 1, basically following the building footprint that reduced remaining one and a half feet, a little off that, about nine feet, still comply with the order, so. Per base coverage did increase by 0.1% due to some changes that I've described a little bit. The original site was 74.3% approval. The amended approval in 2023 was 72.1. We are at 72.2 right now, so still below as proved on the original application. That had also more design and all the other improvements as well, so no additional improvements will be required for stronger applications. Parking, you know, we reduce that several times over the, the order. It's weird now, as I mentioned. Sorry, forgot to, 274 spaces provided on the site, whereas 286 to account for the left, maybe make ready spaces proposed for the credits for those, where 262 are required. They're, they're building on the, the front, south side of the building, west side of Route 1, then the north side by Harmony Center. The luxury deal spaces were relocated from the north side, front of the building, or to the front of the hotel. There are some additional hotel ones that were proposed that are remaining on the east side of the hotel and are shown here. And then some handicap spots were located at issue on the north side buildings as well. Circulation to the site remains unchanged from the prior approvals, so certainly through the north, south, and west side of the building passes out to the main, out to Carnegie Center. That hasn't changed at all. So the improvements that we're proposing, so a change that occurred, there was a drop-off area on the southern side of the restaurant previously. That is, that side was actually fairly large. It was 20 feet wide, about 100 feet long. That's been eliminated. There were some oversized sidewalks and a location as well. Drop-off has been moved now to the west side of the building, as I mentioned before, the building was rotated. So the front entrance now faces east through 1. The west would pose to the parking lot and south where it was before. As mentioned, the sidewalks, there were additional sidewalks and interchanges, the restaurant, previous footprint. Go to main entrance, access point on the west side, I'm sorry, on the east side. That's been eliminated. Now take that to the sidewalks out to the front, both the north and south side to circulate and get to the entrance on the west side of the building. And well, no other changes to the parking lot. Nothing in the south area, nothing in the north area, except the handicaps striking essentially as that was just right for the five handicap spaces that are required for the restaurant. Getting to the, I guess, what are the requirements required? Some situations, so signage is proposed. You have one monument sign being proposed along Route 1 between the vegetable path and then the roadway line. That sign is presented as about 33.54 square feet under the 48 act permitted. It's eight feet high. That's for a waiver for that, where four feet is permitted. That's primarily because the, the existing vegetation along that, the roadway up there, some shrubs are planted, we wanted to sign above those shrubs so that it can be seen by owners coming in the direction. In addition, there are three building-bound signs. Both have the north side, west side of the main entrance, and south side building facing the three-page roadways. On the west side, the same max sign area proposed to 77.32 square feet or 50 feet maximum is permitted. And the ladder height, we're limited 18 inches high. We're anywhere from 22 and a quarter up to 38 inches high. The 22 and a quarter is the, the E center, which is smaller. The tallest letter is the A, the A chap, which is the little accent over the top, it was extended above, and otherwise, the letters are all 30 inches high on that side, that's on the west side, facing Route 1. On the south side, now, on this side, now facing the Route 1 interchange, once again, 50 square feet required. We are proposing again 77.32 square feet, asking for a waiver and saving on the building ladder height, the height of the letters. Actually, I messed up. What I talked about before was the south, was the south side facing Route 1, turn for the ladder heights. Square footage is the same. On the west side, the heights are being too fast. Everything is the same. They're both the same on both those sides. On the north side, there's the one thing. The sign, 50, 50 square foot match, we actually apply on that side. We're going to propose a 49.88, just under 50 square feet. The ladder height, also 18 max permitted. The D in the middle complies, they are 18 inches high. The A with the accent over the top is 30 and a quarter, and the other lettering is 24 inches high, so maybe a waiver for those two points.
I'd like to ask a little bit more about signage, please. Um, you mentioned the one monument sign on Highway 1 Northbound, correct?
Yeah.
Is that the only monument sign?
Yeah, that's the only one we're proposing for our property.
Okay. So, um, can you talk about wayfinding? How do I know how to get to the restaurant? And I'm going to make the assumption that the hotel is in place, because that's going to be a bulk of a building, okay? Follow me on that one. Tell me about wayfinding. If I'm coming down US Route 1 Southbound to get to the restaurant. Wayfinding, how's the, in terms of how Fogo de Chao gets me to where I need to go? Thank you.
I do not know of any sign, or at this time, along any of the roadways for those kind of wayfinding signs along Route 1, the P O T side.
Well, no, I'm actually thinking of Carnegie Center Boulevard and Meadow, Meadow Road. Is there any directional off of those two entryways into the Uh, entry ways into the site to get to to the restaurant?
We didn't propose any additional signage. We were only permitted the one monument sign per code. In today's age with GPS, I mean, they both have their own.
I'm not assuming that everybody has.
I understand that. Um, and I think most people do, but regardless of that, we we don't have anything else proposed. If the boards willing entertain, allowing us to put something additional, we could do that. But again, we didn't want to ask for that additional design waiver because we didn't think it was necessary in today's age. I don't believe we have any unless we put it on our lot. Yeah, we 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 have the same access off the ring road. As as Garden Homes has for that, those those residents, we have access throughout that entire area.
Can you point out?
Yeah, sure.
Entrances there. Now, where, how do I enter the site? So.
So the wall, there's, there's two ways. So if you're, if you're coming down route one into Carnegie Center Drive. You would then pull in off the off ramp and then make a right onto, this is now called Lofts Drive. So you would make the turn into Lofts Drive. And you'd be able to turn right in between this, the shared access point and park within this parking easement here, which is again on. Garden Homes' property, but we have a perpetual easement for these parking spaces. As well as the parking that's here and the parking that's currently being proposed for this phase until we physically build the actual hotel itself.
You have to go all the way around and about to get to the restaurant.
Correct. And then on the flip side, if you were coming. South bound, you would get off at the metal road and then you would make the right onto the ring road and then come in this way. Very easily accessed.
Sorry. Sorry, Chris.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Michael. Your honor.
The structure or what is that along Route one northbound? Is that is that? Trees, a cement wall? I mean, that what? Yeah, that.
Here? Oh, this is, this is under construction. This is all going to be landscaping. This is the bike path here. This is all going to be landscaping.
That's a bike.
Yeah, there's a bike path around the whole perimeter. That was part of the preliminary approval. That's installed. That'll be installed. It's not built there yet. And this is the service to other license.
Yeah, and that's kind of like the service road. Part of Route one where you kind of know you're getting off soon or. Onto, okay. Okay. And, okay. Got it.
So a scenario I envision possibly happening is. Uh, a driver with family, let's say uh. Grandparents, uh, elderly. Uh, persons in the car. Um, you get off, you get off at the Carnegie Center Drive exit. Going one northbound, you make the right turn into the site and then you make the immediate right turn. Uh, into the first opportunity then. Okay, yeah, follow your finger around. Follow it all the way to the entrance. Now, if I want to stop, if I want to drop off my grandparents. I I'm on the wrong side of the uh, the the drop off. So I could see, I could see drivers making the U-turn. You know, to to do the drop off and I don't know if that's really desirable. Am I making sense?
I totally understand that. I mean, again, we have to provide circulation around the entire development, which we have. I think you run into that dilemma in. Most situations in in development like this. So you're always going to have a drop off and it's always going to be one way. Typically on your drop off. So I mean, we're providing this as as an amenity. We don't technically have to provide it. So we're doing it as an amenity.
There's no entrance into the site.
Off of Route one?
Yeah.
There's no access off of here. The only way you can get in is off of Carnegie Center Drive or Meadows.
Like what's off your page?
Nope. Do you have another? Do you have the other overall site plan?
Yeah, I mean, if you.
It's off the map. It's off the.
Yeah, that's what I thought. They give off and then they flinch into the residences and then you can go. Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, there's no direct access into any part of the development off of Route one.
Okay.
Yep. Want to just grab me overall?
Just to the two clips.
Yeah, that one. This is uh. We're referencing the overall pacing plan for a of the submit site plan.
Should we mark that A two?
I don't know if we need to. It's in the set. It's four A in the completed set that was submitted as part of the application.
No, we have it.
I think.
So this is the overall development that I spoke about in the beginning of the application. So you have. Phase two, which is the residence, phase four, which is the other residence, which is owned by Garden Homes. Phase three, which is the two retail buildings which owned by Garden Homes. But the other portion of phase three, which is the restaurant portion, which is on our lot, the owner's lot. And the hotel itself, which is phase one. So again, as we said earlier, this is the hotel parking easement. This, this. This parking and all of this parking is for our development exclusively. Um, and again, your question was in regards to access. So again, you'd have to come down. Route one south, get off, get onto Meadow Road, and then you would make the left off of Meadow into the ring road and follow it northbound. And make the left into phase one. And going northbound, as we said, off of Carnegie, make the right.
Got it. And anybody, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, just with the monument sign, it's eight foot high. And what is the total square footage of the sign?
The total.
The total footage uh, was calculated as thirty three point five four square feet. That's that's taken around roughly. After year. The logo itself, uh, the two, the restaurant plus the hotel, the logos is the uh, rectangle that encompasses the letters from the work.
Right.
So there's a ground portion that will that will deliver to them. Correct. The base doesn't have any letters. So you were forth with the forty four square foot, I think. Forty eight. Forty eight. Yeah. Yes. Just the height of the shrubs. The base is almost three foot.
Yeah.
What do you do when the shrubs block your letters? Or what do you do when the shrubs block your letters? Get the gardener out there to trim it.
Maintain the shrubs.
Got it.
I guess one more question on signage. Could uh, Dave Novak be sworn in, please?
Sure. Why don't we swear all of our folks in at once? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony she'll give will be the truth? So so on. Thanks.
So David. Uh, David, my question to you, we are. Uh, as part of uh, tonight's agenda is the start of the draft sign ordinance work that we're going to be looking at after this application.
Yes.
So my question to you is. Would the applica- if 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 the the draft sign ordinances that are being suggested to West Windsor Township. Are passed and adopted, would these waivers be necessary?
Yeah, yes and no. So one of the recommendations we're making in that draft ordinance is to eliminate the. Letter height requirement or letter height regulation. Uh, obviously, if that was adopted, then this application would not need a waiver from that. The waivers for signage may or may not. Um. I would have to calculate each of those walls, how far they are away from the right away. Uh, the monument sign would still require a waiver. I believe we're recommending a slightly taller height and not eight foot. So it would get them closer to conformance, but not a hundred percent.
What about the number of signs on the building?
Uh, there, there's no waiver required for that. They're good with that. Yeah. Uh, one of the other recommendations we're making is regarding the number of monument signs as well. Currently, the ordinance reads, and I quote, one monument sign should be permitted for each. Provided that a ground mounted project identification sign is not installed. Each frontage, each driveway, I, it doesn't really say. Um, typically it's been interpreted as each frontage maybe, but we're uh. Changing that to specify it. So um. If the board was so inclined to suggest a monument sign along Carnegie Center Drive, that would be. Uh, closer to conformance with what the drafts sign ordinance has.
In what way in?
Yeah, there would be an additional, let me get the language up.
Because usually it's a singular monument sign.
Yep. One of the recommendations we'd be making would be regarding. Monument signs for planned non-residential developments. Would allow for. Uh, one monument sign for each driveway entrance.
Interesting. Thank you.
Anybody?
We have one last thing that I should. Hopefully you could touch on it is your question. Uh, what would happen? I guess if the. Distance was measured in a different way. Uh, you're right now, we're basically, you know, closest. Distance obviously, this is the frontage. So that one would still need a waiver for the uh, for the sign area. Uh, because we're just we throw another fifty square maximum would be put in. The the front of that will allow something eighty point two, but reduce that to fifty. So on the side facing south side. Then the interchange there, that's over uh. That was about like four hundred feet to that point. So a hundred and twenty percent of that money is brought in. Uh, somebody maxed a hundred square feet. We would allow a ninety square foot sign on that design. Uh, based on the map, the seventy five foot front, so that that area gets into ninety square feet. So we would comply with the area if it was measured. The to the southern uh, right away along that point. And then on the order of Carnegie Drive. Same thing, the worst over uh, or two hundred and sixty five feet to that picks up the next requirement, a hundred and twenty percent of the. Frontage at a hundred square foot max. Eighty one free to front into the building there, ninety seven would be allowed where we're at uh, forty nine compliant regardless of that side, but. We know we could go up to a ninety seven square foot application was maybe two. Right away lines up in the chase of roads, the south is pacing. So we've still been one on the on the west side pacing for one for the waiver at the time. If the south side will comply, if that is the distance.
So what intrigues me with this is um, the below the hotel parking lot, that is a developable site within. Their master plan, correct? So but but in relation to signage, it's distance from the roadway. Not including that there might be a building obstruction between. The signage and the road with a possible development. You see the lower rectangle. You pointed that one, that one. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, you know what I mean, David? On that one? Do you hear my point, David?
Guess not.
Do you understand my point, David?
I, I'm sorry.
So so the, whereas he said there's the four hundred feet to the roadway. Okay, yet. Um, you know, there, there could be a building obstruction as part of that four hundred feet. Does that, how does something like that? Work into the calculation for signage height? Or consideration even? At all?
In regard to the both the existing and proposed regulations, it would not, right? So. We don't account for the existing signage regulations or this draft signage regulation, whether or not there's an obstruction there. But that would be something within the board's purview is if there is a special. Case or special incidents that would. Warrant a sign waiver or a slightly larger sign or a sign at a different location. Due to those types of physical obstructions. So that's not something we necessarily always catch in the ordinance. But that's why we have these applications and we can go through that process and you would have the opportunity to either grant or deny waiver.
Michael, good.
Okay. Okay.
Again, just one last touch on.
Yeah.
Parking. Talk about that again. You know, through the preliminary approval to the amended approval, this approval, the total, total provided parking has been decreased. From the original, um, for that we are still above the required. Uh, minimum uh, for. Sorry, the required required amount for the parking. Uh, of two hundred and sixty two spaces that I mentioned were two hundred and seventy four, but the credit to a two sixty six. But we were uh. Substantially more than we were three hundred when we started. Um, then that's what we designed, how they're changing them, made the plans. We're getting closer and closer to that. Uh, so I don't believe that these, you know, with any restaurant popularity. Never, you know, having a little extra parking is never a bad thing, uh, especially. Into. To start that process. So and then depending what uses go into the retail spaces down there, so you never know how share parties. Through there. So uh, we have reduced it significantly off season. It's the initial one where we were fifty spaces over. Now we're about sixty spaces over.
Okay.
So I don't see any detriment. That waiver. I also don't see a detriment on. Or no zone plan, the sign variance of regardless of meters, you know, that lettering height and the size of the signs based on approximately the roads for distance and safety. Very similar situation we had at the hotel, we had the larger signs there, but also.
Will, will the monument sign that's going to be above the landscaping? Is it going to have the name of the restaurant, then next right or with an arrow or something or like, how will people know?
I think it was submitted, uh, but we have a patient.
Okay.
There's a uh, the name of the restaurant about a pop. Hotels. Oh, I have a server.
Okay. I I guess if you're in in that roadway, I guess the only way is both, okay, I'm in the right place, I guess. Continue on the road and bear right and. Will there be another, there won't be another sign on.
Within the site, not within the site.
The only I can sign.
Yeah, okay. Right. So so if they bear right it, they bear right on. If they bear right there, how do they know? Well, I I have to make another right into the. I know the GPS, right?
That's, that's.
Yeah. So. And that's why I told you about the building sign is so important. So. You know, it helps put a distance down the highway.
Yeah.
Down the highway.
Right.
Be able to see it.
Yes, you see it and okay, how do I get there? Got it.
That's what I would have made it quickly.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, it's divided. Yeah.
I feel the app has been put on.
That's right. Northbound, you'd have to be on the service.
Parking information where it's located. So people can find.
Yeah. We can always pass it and make a U-turn.
No, that's, no, very good point has been made that there is the the service. Road northbound between Meadow and Carnegie Center Drive. So it's not like you, it's not like you see the restaurant in the main lanes of Highway one and then make the decision. To make the right at Carnegie Center Drive because they're not allowed to. If you're on the main drive of Highway one northbound.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, that's a good idea.
Good point, Sam.
Unless you want to grant us another one of those, we'll put one uh, one of the other entry points.
That's all.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Jeffrey Lim, I'm a licensed architect. Been practicing for about thirty years now. Uh, got my architectural degree from the State University of New York in Buffalo. And uh, currently uh, sold about about thirty eight license and I've been working with Fogo for. Over eight years now.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Jeffrey Lim.
Lim. Thank you.
You should plan set or
Hang up.
Why don't we do this?
Paper being wasted.
Somewhere not possible.
Okay, so this is pretty close to
Hold up the mic, please.
Mr. Wells pointed out earlier, this is pretty close to our prototype that we're developing. We do design this and tweak it, you know, depending on the locality, so it fits in with the the site and the surroundings. But a lot of the changes in the practice, you know, we try and keep for the operations. So here's the floor plan we're looking at, the proposed floor plan. As you see from the front. Yes. Yeah.
Speak right into it.
Just to walk you to the plan, we got our front entrance here that's facing Route one. And we have an outdoor patio in this end and have all the dining painting up front and the back house, basically the back house towards the hotel.
There's a there's a bar area, right?
Right, there's a bar area right here.
Is it? Is the bar circular or is there a wall behind? Is a wall?
There's a wall behind it, but we have a glass opening, so you could kind of see the fenestration from inside to out.
Thank you.
In the exterior seating area, is it typical practice for the restaurant to have exterior heating elements to extend the season of use?
We do have typically, we have heating elements, but you know, it depends on, you know, how the severity of the weather.
Depends on what?
The severity of the weather, of course.
Severity of the weather.
And okay.
Are you installing heaters or not?
We are, yes.
How many seats did you say there were on the on the outside patio?
We have about sixty three on the outside. Interior seating count, we have about two hundred and thirty five interior.
So in terms of the parking requirements, you have to, basically, the two were added together and then the parking count was established. Okay.
So this is some of the straight front elevation. This is the the patio area side, the entry side on this side. Might be easier to see it actually with more of the renderings.
This is in our packets, right?
Correct. Everything in here is in the package.
Why don't we mark this A two? This will be exhibit A two.
Okay. Plan set, original date issued date seven one twenty five. Let me make sure I have the recent ones. Let me make sure there's no other dates. Seven one twenty twenty five. That is more of an enlarged version of the exterior for the front. You get the front entry, you get the the entry elements, significant entrance, and you have the patio flanking the front and the hotel doors back.
Yeah, I got that wood actually showing just the small
Correct. So a lot of the materials on here are all natural. We have a lot of the materials that are found in the hotel, it's right here, we have some some brick, some ephes and then natural looking woods. Like a lot of these is like a stone, we have the brick. We have ephes. Again, stone and the brick, and we have natural wood on the other side of the openings here and at the back as well.
Exterior insulation finishing system. Correct.
Oh, this this side right here?
I'm just, you you use the acronym. I'm just explaining.
Yes. And again, as you're moving around the building, this is looking more towards the backside hotel to your left. And so, I mean, we do you know, making making a lot of attempt to make sure the building fits in the site and it's not just some big box that you're going to just look at in all different directions. So even the backside, we we try and, you know, keep keep more of the articulation and a lot of interest to the building.
Will there be a connection between the hotel and the building?
I'm sorry?
Will there be a connection?
No.
Between the hotel and building? So they'll just have to walk around to the front.
It was originally a proposed way back when, and then when they revised it with the hotel, they eliminated that connection.
It doesn't matter. Yes, I was curious.
It's a great question. No, we we secured an additional liquor license on top of the hotel one that we would, that would be born from it. So that 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 liquor license will go to FOGO. I knew somebody was going to ask that question. Thanks, Sam.
And now we're facing the front of the building again. Right here's the front of the entrance and you're turning around by the exterior patio. And so you, again, we're keeping the same materials along the all around building and, you know, keeping a lot of interests, different articulations, different heights. And so you you have a very interesting building and then something that's, you know, you'd be pleased to look at and it's all portioned correctly.
So I appreciate the the premise of outdoor seating. But practically speaking, sometimes it can be problematic. What's the distance from that seat that you're right next to and Route one?
Which seating?
For the closest to the road. Yeah, that's about
It's about seventy, I think.
The reference take back to A one. The outdoor seating area through here is is right off the the sidewalks. So you're looking about eight feet from the handicap parking. And then wraps around. They're wrapped around the front here. So once again, you're probably looking at eight eight feet, ten feet at most. As a close point at the drop off there.
He's talking this to the road to Highway.
From dining area to Highway.
The right away, it's about eighty five feet.
Basically, when the picture is now, it's a home plate. What's that?
From first base to the first. Yeah, eighty five, which is about sixty.
Six hundred and six.
My father always taught us, you always go lower, you don't go higher. Point made. I'm just wondering about the experience. I have no experience with respect to judging. I'm just curious, you guys do this all the time. What's that distance when you're sitting having dinner? Really like?
So the dinner is going to be to the right away line at sixty five.
Oh, yeah.
Jimmy, you just told.
Our 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 companies, I've probably developed seventy five restaurants over the last twenty years with with Briad. It really depends. It's a great question, but I feel that if it's a nice stay out, people aren't too worried about local highway noise. I think all of us from New Jersey are used to that for the most part. I mean, born and raised here and a lot of a lot of restaurants that we have are even closer sometimes, you know, where it, you know, it can be unfortunate, you know, you try to screen it as best you can, you have your ambient music, but now the people that don't want to sit outside, they sit inside, you know, it's really an amenity during the the summer months anyway. And if it's too hot, people want to sit inside or
I agree. I love dining outside. I'll be honest, I'm just a little concerned in general. I wish the hotel were here to make this business even more successful.
I think it will be. It's just, you know, it's unfortunately with economics and everything that's going on in today's world, it's it's been a little bit difficult. I mean, we we own and operate over, you know, fifteen hotels. So. Yeah.
I'm just curious about what that experience is like.
The cars are going to slow down around that area because they're heading into the restaurant.
Maybe.
Are berms provided? Going to be provided along Route one?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? That's it. We were just talking about that. Matt just said it himself. The restaurant actually sits probably five or six feet lower than the actual highway itself. So you still, you have that, you'll and you'll have the shrubs that are also along Route one that are going to be somewhat of a buffer.
But no berming?
I I guess you can consider to burn because it slopes down from Route one.
That's not.
So I mean, even if you pull it, well, technically it is, because if you pull in head in, you're still five, six feet, you know, below that.
I don't agree with you on that point, but certainly the shrubs will provide some kind of separation.
Yeah, well, the shrubs will be about thirty six inches.
Not noise, but depends upon the conversation you have.
Person that does this all the time, that that's not a concern to you, so.
I actually, I did a Zimberger in Morris Plains and it's right off of State Highway two oh two and Route ten. I don't know if you know the area, but the the it's now a Tommy's, but that outdoor patio was is five feet from the highway. And it's packed all the time.
Like a Route one highway?
Yes. Route ten is jammed all the time. And during during the good days, that that whole outdoor area is jammed with people.
But thank you.
So I I wanted to take just a little further and Rob, you sparked my mind. I'm just trying to anticipate the dining experience mid-July towards evening at the exterior with the combination of 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 the heat and sunset, this is located on the west side of the building, as well as the intensity of trucks on using Highway one all through twenty four seven. But I'm just saying, there's a lot intense truck use on Highway one. Our we've we've seen how in West Windsor over all these many years, that how with every toll, with every toll change on the toll roads, that we get more more tractor trailers on Highway one, going from two ninety five up to Route eighteen and Turnpike to continue northbound or southbound on two ninety five. And so that 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 combination does not seem pleasant to me. I mean,
You'll sit inside.
Best efforts in doing this. I get that, but I'm just thinking of the intensity of trucks on Highway one as and and all the noise that goes with that.
Well, again, I mean, I don't want to speak for
And I don't, I I think your other FOGO locations don't, I mean, I I'm thinking Bridgewater doesn't have this issue.
I'm I'm not the applicant, so I don't want to speak on behalf of this. I can only speak to my my old restaurants that I've developed over the last twenty years.
Your other FOGO locations, do you have a Highway one right next to it?
We do not have a highway. No, we do not. The I I I can speak from just standing out there today. I did drive by the site previous to this and just wanted to kind of stand there and just have, just so I could see it, we were going to have conversations about signage and things like that. So fresh on my mind as of today, I actually was showing Jeff some pictures before we got here. I I think the elevation change is a bit taller than five foot. And the only reason I bring that up is because I I kind of stood on site with my back to where the front door I thought would be. Just kind of eyeballing a little bit and I took a picture. We were showing it, that's sitting in the room here. And I noticed the the trucks that you're that you're talking about, I I think on an iPhone where you can get a live photo, the the car's zooming by and I we caught a glimpse of the very, very top of an eighteen wheeler. So I my point is, I think that that barrier, that berm or whatever we're calling it is a is a touch higher at our front door than than the five feet, which is going to be a more natural barrier, in my opinion. As far as the July feedback, I I mean, that's something that we challenged. I actually was at Bridgewater earlier just saying hi to the team and everything and the the topic of of heat came up. I mean, that's just something that we deal with everywhere, where it's where it's a summer climate, so.
With me, it wasn't so much the the visual of the trucks, it's the noise of the trucks on Highway one and their closeness to the outside patio.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, you don't have that problem, Bridgewater. You don't.
We do not. No, no. In the mall, I mean, you're you're inside a ring road and you're you're well well removed from the
Even though two eighty seven and two oh two and two oh six are right there, that's not
I can tell you the the closest comparison, I think, this puts sort of the building, the closest comparison, anybody is familiar with the DFW area, we have this building that we've built there right on six thirty five. Six thirty five is a my opinion, and Route one, a little bit further, this is maybe same distance to the service road and then you have the highway. But it's 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 the closest comparable that I that I can think of. I I think it's the I mean, it's it's a real, real concern, I I think.
I'll I'll quote the the chair in from past episodes, something like this, let the market play out.
Exactly. If if people go dining outside and the noise is too loud, they'll come back and they'll insist on sitting inside.
I beat you.
I I also, we also constructed a Zimberger on Route one in Edison. So same highway. Outdoor patio, probably about the same distance, right where the Topgolf is. I don't know if you've ever
It's got the same level.
It's now TOs. I don't know if you've been to it at that point, but that has the same thing, outdoor patio, probably eighty feet from Route one. And they do very well still. Certain people aren't bothered by it, some people don't. That's why, again, you get the best of both worlds, you have that option.
So this is a sheet of, you know, we've kind of added the the square footage, there was a comma that came up, minimum requirements for square footage of the windows versus the facade. And so we've put all the the square footage in here, the percentages, just to show that we have great compliance of that. Another topic that the point that came up, you know, how do we shield our, our rooftop equipments? And so we've dashed them in. Uh, we, we do all our designs in three dimension modeling. And so all the mechanical equipments are all modeled. And so we dashed them in the exterior to kind of show behind where the equipments are. So anywhere from the street that you walk around, they're all shielded.
You're right.
Okay.
And then this is more of a, what I showed earlier was the elevations and this is more of an actual three dimensional view of what you're looking at standing outside. So a lot of, we shielded, we dashed in a lot of the equipment, kind of to show you in where they are to the building. That's last page. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I am a two thousand four graduate of Penn State University where I received a Bachelor of Landscape Architecture degree. I'm currently licensed in the state of New Jersey and I hold the position of associate at Malillo Bauer, at Malillo Bauer Carmen in Brielle, New Jersey, and I've appeared on similar applications throughout the state.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, can you?
Tell your last name.
It's K O B E S K Y. Thank you. Okay. So yeah, this is the sheet L two of our plan set.
Um, it is our sheet. It's our rendered version of our sheet help you handle. We put the plan for the restaurant site.
Thank you. Julie, I'll try to review to summarize the mistake.
Okay, I will be quick. Um, so overall, the landscape updates to the existing site plan were very minimal. Our changes focused on some minor adjustments to the buffer planting along Route one to accommodate the, um, the, the monument signage. And then, uh, we prepared a detailed landscape plan for the restaurant pad site. And there were also some very, very minor adjustments to the lighting layout to accommodate the, um, revised curb lines for the latest site plan for the restaurant. So looking at our sheet L two, um, you can see that, uh, only the, this year, here of planting that will be part of this phase, um, we did incorporate a secondary planting list. Just indicate the plant material that will only be part of this phase. And as I said, we included just some, some extremely minor shifts to the planting along the buffer. Um, we do have, as, as was discussed earlier, there's some shrubs and trees along the buffer area. We've maintained the same quantity, same species as was approved. We just shifted some of the species ever so slightly to match up some shrub materials that were better suited to be, um, directly adjacent to the monument signage. Overall, the quantities and general locations of all of the trees within the parking areas remain the same as well. It should be noted, there is one tree that we did notice, um, that will have to be located, um, that we didn't get that wrong. Does coordinate currently with some changes to the, um, parking, the accessible parking along the building facade. Um, so then shifting to my recent Um, so overall, the, the plant palette includes a, um, diverse and hearty palette of both native and adapted plant materials, um, to enhance the architecture of the restaurant. We've incorporated evergreen, um, and flowering deciduous shrubs, ornamental brasses and flowering perennials to create year-round interest, um, around the, the building. We've incorporated evergreen shrubs, um, in certain locations to screen, uh, any utilities. And we've also incorporated a lot of evergreen shrubs along the back of the, the building, help screen any use, um, of the back of the hospital from the hotel. That's pretty much the gist of the, the, um, landscape design. In terms of lighting, like I said, we, um, made some, some very minor modifications just to shift the lights that were previously approved to accommodate the, the latest curb lines. There was a waiver granted in the original approval for light levels and we're still maintaining, we're still staying within the realm of what was approved, uh, in terms of the light levels.
Thank you, Julie. Julie, um, the, uh, green space between the restaurant and the hotel.
Yeah.
What percentage of a day is that going to be within shade?
Um, it, it would be shaded for a fair amount of the day. Um, everything we have located in there is something that, that would tolerate.
That's where I was going to ask. That was my follow-up question. How, how, how much, the choice of plantings that you, you have for there are work in shaded environments, correct? Okay, thank you.
That is a presentation. Just one comment. We have been through the various review letters. The applicant had no problem with what's stated in those reviews. We will comply. Sure, you want to hear from your experts. Uh, but I just want to make clear that the applicant has worked with your consultants and we're happy to satisfy the comments in the review letters, but that is our presentation.
Okay, thank you. Rob, you want to question?
Where's Fogo de Chao? Translate to.
It's in Portuguese.
No Fogo de Vichta Paul.
Okay, um, who wants to go first? David, you're sworn in. You want to go first?
Oh, sure. Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, again, this is David Novak with Virgins Associates, the board planning consultant. We had a memo dated August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, the applicant addressed a lot of the comments already on our planning review. I just have one very minor insignificant question, but because it's my memo, I'm going to ask it anyway. Um, just as a quick clarification, so the site plan identifies the restaurant will have a floor area of eight thousand four hundred and twenty-eight square feet. The architectural plan identifies a gross condition building area of eight thousand four hundred and twenty-four square feet, but then an indoor table calculation of eight thousand four hundred and twenty-eight square feet. Says he wanted to make sure there wasn't a typo there or the gross condition building area really is four square feet less. Again, very nitpicky insignificant, but. And while the applicant is looking that up, uh, they addressed the signage comments we had as well as the operational information, uh, we requested. The district requires a number of different architectural design standards. We reviewed those standards against what the applicant was proposing and found that the applicant was addressing those standards. So we found that satisfactory and as of right now, have no additional comments on this.
Okay.
Dave, you had a comment about, uh, how the architectural elements of the restaurant relate to those of the hotel?
They, he did address that, yes. So, uh, similar materials and colors, specifically the brick and the, the coloring of, uh, coloring the brick. Uh, in that one rendering, um, that showed the side of the restaurant with the hotel in the back, you can see it a little bit better about how those colors would match up. And again, we don't want it to look exactly the same. It's just complementary to each other.
Okay, um, who wants to go next, Fran? It's with Fran and it's Alex Warren. Okay.
Uh, good evening. Francis Kuzic, Township Engineer. We've prepared a report of August twenty-eighth. Uh, similar to David's comments, there has been a lot of conversation that has addressed the number of items in the report already. There are a few, uh, comments that, that I'm okay with being addressed as conditions of approval. I'm not sure that they're important enough that they warrant specific questions and testimony on the record, uh, by the applicant. Uh, but one of the concerns that we've had with this, uh, project is, um, due to the phasing and what's controlled by different entities in those different phases. And basically trying to make sure that those improvements that are necessary to serve this use at the time that they're requesting a certificate of occupancy are in fact complete and operational and not going to delay or cause a problem at the time of a request of any certificate of occupancy for the project. So uh, in the report, those comments, one point oh three, one point oh four, three point oh two are all related to that. And they've attempted in, in the phasing plan to address, um, these certain things will be done, uh, in Phase one A and then Phase three will be done. And then a portion of Phase one B could possibly done with, with sidewalk, but up until this, this rendering, I wasn't clear exactly how much sidewalk in Phase one B they were proposing to do. So there's still a number of things that I think need to be clarified, not necessarily for the board's purposes, but for, for our purposes in the township between, um, Sam's office and my office at the time of inspection and requests for certificates of occupancy. And I, I guess I'd just like the applicant to understand that because of the different ownership and responsibilities, do they understand and agree that failure of completion of, of all of Phase one A may delay their receipt of a certificate of occupancy? Uh, whoever's comfortable answering that.
I, I can answer that. Um, if you require a more detailed plan that shows exactly what's going to be constructed, we can definitely provide that. I can go even further and give further testimony tonight, if you'd like, to put it on the record as well. Just so you know, as the owner, we're providing all of the site work minus the parking easement. The parking easement is being constructed by Garden Homes. We understand that that has to be completed and functional in order for the CO to be granted for the restaurant. We also know that we have to develop the entire parking lot area that's being proposed on the plan that you had just referenced. And then we're going to be seeding the area where the hotel is at that point in time till we're ready to build that. So I can provide that plan if you want me to point out on, on the site plan, what's being proposed at this point in time.
No, I think, I think the color that first exhibit by Omen, um, was definitely helpful.
That's basically what you're going to say.
Right. And that, that was a lot more.
I mean, with landscaping, obviously.
Right, right. That was more understandable than, than what some of the plans in the set have been, but uh, speaking of the parking easement, who's installing the light fixtures in the parking easement?
They're installed already.
Who's going to control, or who?
All of that lighting is controlled by Garden Homes. We pay CAM back to them. So we pay a maintenance charge, which is an electric, we pay a prorata electricity bill back to them. The owner does, not the restaurant owner.
Do you know what the lighting arrangement is going to be for the restaurant? Because only the hotel had the approval and the initial approval to have twenty-four hour lighting for security purposes.
Um, I mean, as of now, I mean, that entire, we, we can control the lights however you want them to be until we construct a hotel. So if you want them off at a certain time, it would be more tailored to how the restaurant's closing time is and probably what, an hour, two hours after closing for the employees.
Right.
I, I prefer not to turn them off at all, honestly, be from a security purpose, but if it's a town ordinance and we're required to, then we'll work with you guys how we have to.
Well, yeah, norm- normally the lighting's turned off, except where required for security purposes. So the board has previously approved applications showing lights basically lit dust to dawn, but that needs to be part of this presentation during the meeting and just reflected in, in the approval. Up until now, the original approval was the only one that talked about that and it was specific to the hotel, not, nothing.
I got you.
For the restaurant. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear before, um, we, we leave and the board does any action on this application. Let's see. So you answered the question about that. Okay. Yeah, again, I think a lot of things can be addressed at the administrative level. We talked about the lighting analysis. We, they talked about the parking waiver. Yeah, I, I think I'm okay at this point. Unless the board has anything they want, um, illuminated more. One point about what Curtis was saying about the, uh, the use of the drop-off lane. If I get this out. So if someone was to come in Carnegie Center, if they had a wayfinding sign at this driveway to direct them to this driveway to make the right end, then they'd be lined up for that, not coming in. But they've not requested that, but the board could, uh, make it a condition, right, that they work with the owner. If they need to get a lease agreement or notification, so.
Would the board be recommending another monument sign or an instructional sign? So would the board willing, again, I don't know what they're proposing, but the maximum sign area for an instructional sign is two square feet. What are we proposing? Let me check.
No.
Square feet is a little small.
It's about the size of your laptop there.
Yes.
Twenty-four by thirty-six.
Uh, so in the draft ordinance, uh, we bumped that up to eight square feet. Yeah, that's more in line with what people done in the past. Well, I think, uh, I think Fran was talking about one near Carnegie and then one closer to that intersection with the three crosswalks.
Yeah, I was just talking about the two internal driveways.
Okay.
I wasn't talking about up there because by the time you come up here, you're going to see the restaurant. So you're going to know you're going to have to turn here anyway. So it's just not using this driveway to use this driveway. So you, they're making the right and the right at the drop off.
Yeah, the majority of the parking is in that area too. So, right? So it kind of makes sense.
Yeah, the majority of the parking is in that area too. So, right? So it kind of makes sense.
So I would say it would definitely benefit us for sure. And I agree 100%. I think the understanding was that one was allowed. So that was the request. Not that we forgot to request or anything like that. So if it's allowable.
Yeah, this would be, I think what the board is saying is that they would be inclined to grant a waiver for what's called instructional. So these would be kind of smaller than monument sign. But proposing two signs in those locations just discussed with a maximum sign area of eight square feet, whereas two square feet would typically be permitted, just a smaller sign, the instructional internally focused sign to direct traffic going that way. I think a little bit further south.
The one in this one, whether you do it on this side or this side, just advising people come down here, have one down here, turn right. Yeah, but if they come in that way, they'd see this sign and turn here anyway. So this is more to make sure people are coming in aligned to use your drop off.
So that keeps coming from the other entrance to, you know, know to make the left there.
You're twisting his arm. Ow, ow, ow.
We want you to be successful.
I mean, is it? Are we allowed to request that additional monument sign instead of, I don't think.
Well, they wouldn't be monuments.
Sorry.
Right.
And what do those signs, what are they gonna say like?
They're fogging a shower with an arrow.
Yeah. You could, right, you could do the logo with an arrow, you could do a logo with text.
I'm just kidding. Yeah, I understand we're talking about two different things. I think the reason monument came up again was, is there is there a revision to what's already allowed that would allow another monument per facade, I think is.
Yeah, so that would be able to go on for.
Well, that would be my first question. What's the timing on that? Okay, okay.
And we only need one direction.
Yeah, again, so that's, that's all I had that I'd like to have had testimony from the applicant about. Unless the board has any questions for me about my report.
The emergency services report and he's indicating fire lanes shall be created by the applicant. Are you going to be looking at that as well as the fire box?
Typically only if he requests us to. I know that during the initial preliminary approval, there was a lot of truck turning templates and testimony provided at that time. So I think they, he probably just personally wants for his use.
So they'll have to work that out with the fire.
Yeah, it'll it'll still be shown on the plans that come through my office for approval. So we'll take a look at it anyway, but it's really his jurisdiction to tweak.
Exactly. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Fran, I have a quick question. I'm noticing impervious coverage reduced from 74.3 to 72.2. Isn't isn't that impervious coverage kind of, isn't that high in general, 72%?
It's it reflects the density of the overall project, yes.
So except even though it's if it was a residential area, like if I was to pave over my backyard, that impervious coverage would be too much, but in this case it's okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, because you don't need a giant parking lot and other amenities like they need here for customers.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, everybody. Ed Snikus from Burgess Associates, the landscape architect. We had prepared a review of August 26th, 2025. Much like Fran had just provided, the applicant has addressed a lot of our questions during a direct testimony. The one thing that I'm still trying to figure out is exactly the the phasing lines that are on the landscape plans. I'm trying to make sure that it seems that the landscaping between the hotel and the restaurant, at least in the service area for screening, the shrubs are being included in this phase. I believe that's correct. It looks like the applicant has confirmed that. Thank you. If we can clarify that on the plan, just to make sure that's the case, and I appreciate Ms. Probeski, excuse me, I just want to make sure I pronounced that correctly, is the adjustment of the trees within the one area of the parking lot, which we had noticed there was a difference. In addition to that, the board had provided in their discussions about the outdoor dining, the shrub material along Route 1. One thing I would offer, and maybe the landscape architect can look at this, is maybe some more higher textured shrubs, whether they be more leafed shrubs instead of just ornamental grasses. I believe you have ornamental grasses there now, something to provide that visual separation from the road. If you take a look at that, that would be my recommendation, just to add to what the board was discussing before. The phase limits we talked about. I appreciate the improvements to the landscaped areas. Clarify the discrepancy. And we discussed the hotel area. The applicant is adding a bench in front of the building for people who are waiting, waiting for the drop off and pickup. That bench, it's, you provided a detail on the plan. It shows a back sided bench, which I believe is what you're proposing compared to just a flat bench. So you're proposing a bench with the back and that is what's confirmed. Okay, thank you. And then also there's a bike rack that's part of this overall solution as well. In the landscape plan, just hearing tonight's testimony regarding the the shared parking area with the adjacent commercial space, is the landscaping being installed now within that area? Or is that for a future phase? The shared parking area. The shared parking area that's being, yes, is the landscaping in that area being proposed? There's a, there's a hatch pattern.
That 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 hatch pattern is, it's going to be installed, but it's not going to be installed by the owner, which is Pride Development. That's going to be installed by Garden Homes. They're in the process of doing all that. They should be paving that parking lot. Rough grading it probably sometime in the next few weeks. They're fixing some curbing now and then they're gonna go in and base pave it. And then they're gonna finish pave and then stripe it once the restaurant is further along, which will be sometime next year. So that entire parking easement area will be paved, curved, striped, landscaped. Okay. And and any grass areas. So it'll, it'll be completely finished.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to understand the limits and responsibilities between the with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have unless the board has some questions for me.
Thank you. Anybody? Okay. Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Good evening, good evening, everyone. This is Quasi Masood, the traffic consultant, township traffic consultant.
Get your mic on or something.
This is Quasi Masood, Township Traffic Consultant. The applicant has addressed most of our comments except a very minor one. We issued a letter, August 22, 2025. There was one comment that we had about the callouts for the stop signs. So that's a very minor comment. If you could address that in the site plan.
We'll, we'll provide the update on the on the compliance plans.
Yeah, that was the only outstanding comment we had, except the fact that they already addressed the signage comment we had, the parking comments we had. So everything is, looks good to me. Unless anyone has any question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from the board? No.
What's the expected timeframe when it will be? When it will be ready?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? Oh, we plan to start site work very quickly within the next month or two. Tonight, we have, we have everything else pricing. So that will start the site work. Once the pad is in delivery mode, hopefully we'll be able to file our plans very quickly. All the CDs are done, completed by Fogo at this point. So all the huh? Well, we have a no, we, well, we have bonds posted and and compliance plans for the existing site work that's being done. Yes, that will will address accordingly. I hope that answers it. And I would say, I don't know what your completed build out anticipation is, honestly, so.
We're waiting on him. So once the entitlements are in place, they've done what they're doing, we're about 26 weeks to build the building.
Thank you. Anybody? No? Okay. Just a couple of things. I'm gonna read in to, for the record, the fire and emergency services from the fire marshal report. I'll paraphrase. So regarding access, the applicant has provided composite drawings showing adequate site access for emergency vehicles. Due to limited limited access, no parking fire lanes shall be created by the applicant along all curb areas to restrict curb side parking from the entire site. Site plan shows adequate number of spacing of fire hydrants for fire protection, water supply. And these asking for a locked box to allow immediate access by the fire department shall be installed next to the sprinkler closet. Position of fire department connection that supports the fire sprinkler system is adequately placed as shown. And the applicant has addressed all concerns by the fire marshal. So anything in this report you're willing to do?
All acceptable.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next thing I'll do is I'll turn it over to the public. If they'd like to ask any questions regarding this application, please step up to microphones that you name and adds for the record. Anybody? Okay, seeing none. Close the public hearing. Do you have a motion close of hearing? Second, one favor, say aye. Aye, aye, okay. Any questions, comments, deliberation? Anybody? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve PB 25 dash O six with the recommendations, waivers, comments. So moved.
We can vote. So just to be clear, we're granting, the board is considering granting for the four waivers that were requested as outlined, but in addition has recommended a second instructional sign on that internal road at the second driveway. Few instructional signs.
Right.
To, okay, of eight square feet. Okay. The single waiver, I think that we grant for the both. Yeah. And in addition to the conditions that were outlined in the the reports, there was one additional request from the applicant that the the existing TWA, the TW approval be resubmitted and amended. But I was gonna ask Francis if you would comment on that.
Yeah, I think it's a little different than that. I think they're asking that the town act on this application and their building permit package under the existing TWA granted for the project, which is, that's usually what we do.
Yep.
So it's, we don't, because they're reducing the flow or modifying the flow as as approved in that TWA, if it was a big increase, we would require that they amend it. But in this case, because of the elimination of the rooftop bar and the other changes to the seating, it's it's decreasing. So it's, it's not a problem to proceed under the original approval for the permit.
Any, any other?
Nope.
Thank you. Okay. Now entertain a motion to approve PB 25 dash O six with the comments, proposals, recommendations talked about. Moved by Jordica, second by Alan. Please call the roll. Yes.
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 Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, can we take five?
Sure, we'll take a five minute break.
Yeah, we're doing better than we're last. Well, after my wife and I came over to Burgess. I was having issues with her, she was having a lady. She was going into the but we decided we're gonna create ourselves. So a few days before we're gonna take he's playing quick ball, ended up on a I totally missed the probably said she had a tour in the she gave her all this paint, all this time we got some advantage, we had to get off. So we got no idea what a game we're taking those guys word pay because our get onto the ship. She was the only person who got it. That's sick. She loved it. She it was, it was five days. It's not very good going on here, but I don't have a CT going for food, you know, and then able so I was going out seeing everything. I was arranged for breakfast and we went to her and we have a friend, a German doctor, I was from New Orleans, she drives. Please. So we go to the emergency. First, they asked us for insurance. Just took a pass at the scans. The town has seen by he spoke English. I'm sending and he's going like so he said we need to see a CT. The two doctors oh, no, he didn't, we didn't have them. What they do is they put everything on a QR. Just scan. I have all the x-rays. I have all so we had a choice. They said you can heal a home where you could heal here. So we've already booked the hotel. We closed this place. They had it in, they had a wheelchair. They had it in, they had a wheelchair for us, and we're spending. It was crazy, and then, actually, this month of August, we were back in Oxford. At the resort, a daughter was hiking in Switzerland with her husband. So they both weren't. President Germany was there, so we have praise for the. Everything. Came out nicely, as opposed to less. Yeah, there was, a hundred percent. Went to therapy. The doctor here, oh, so I'm waiting for the bill. So a month and a half. Get ourselves. So I told the doctor's here, he does not think two thousand dollars for this. X-rays, the CTs. I don't, it was a PA, wasn't really a doctor, it was like Friday afternoon. And nobody was around. I know. I've had experience with doctors in Austria, and they're good. They're good, and the whole health system, everybody's. For frequent. There's one woman. We have a, another friend, she's on the Austrian border, she's a clothing. It has the whole factory, and she has the material coming out, and she's everything's. You can also get, you can get your teeth done.
Oh, I know.
Man, but it's a man, listen. I sent you the psych plan of Virginia, did I not? The Virginia buckles, did I send you that psych plan?
No, but I'm familiar with it.
No, no, but the, 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 the psych plan, it, it would not work in West Windsor, because it's like one entry in, one entry out. And because of the nature, but it might work where they're at, but it wouldn't work here. With only one, one access. You went to the Virginia?
Yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I was sitting. They don't allow. Martin isn't so soon.
Rob is gone.
I mean, I'm thinking, I'm still thinking the acreage round was left, Bucky's needs like that twenty-five to thirty acres. No, they need twenty, and may have twenty-five to thirty acres left over.
I don't know, but that's a.
But again, but again, Bucky's in New Jersey, and it's not. And and I don't know if they'd like it, because it's not right on the interstate. But if, but we have the highway one track. Yeah, but the interstate is from K nine. What is it? No, you're right, this is a state. Well. So, very good, okay, I get that. Which is an interesting perspective, the other thought is. Wawa is got, doing what's called a travel center. And you can see that, you know, that's a reaction of. But Wawa. Oh, I know, it is a whole. No, no, but, but, but you have the loyal, loyal followers. But Wawa's got intense loyal followers. I mean, we're, I, even, I have a coworker in Pennington who will go take, go get lunch from the Wawa viewing. And that's not that close, but they'll make the trip, because we don't, there's not Wawa in the Hopewell Valley.
Let's keep going.
Yes.
And do we need? No.
She, all her stuff still here.
We're at the mayor. Mayor's done.
Silence.
Entertain a motion to reopen public session. Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Back in the public session. And uh, next up on the agenda is the draft sign ordinance. I have questions, but the do, you know, but I'll open it up to my colleagues here. Yeah, 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 please give an overview.
Little bit of an overview, um, and this was a nice segue into this discussion tonight with that last application. Uh, so we are working on some updates to the township regulations. So signage is always a fun thing to talk about, um, I did a quick count of the board, I think we have twelve people up there, please don't check my math. You could have twelve people look at a sign and get twenty different opinions, so it is a fun thing to try to regulate, because. You are trying to balance a bunch of different items, uh, wayfinding, corporate branding, aesthetics, and sometimes even personal taste. The township signage regulations are contained in four different sections of the ordinance right now, we have section two hundred dash thirty-two, that's where we really see the most work with our signage regulations. That regulates signs in residential districts, uh, commercial app, or commercial developments as well as planned non-residential developments, so the application we just had today. Was requesting waiver relief from section two hundred dash thirty-two, and specifically dealing with non-residential plant developments. We also have sign regulations in section two hundred dash one fifty-two, that establishes general sign regulations and regulations regarding temporary signs. We have regulations in section two hundred dash two fifty-eight D, that regulates signs throughout the Princeton Junction redevelopment area. Except for section two hundred dash two sixty, which regulates um, signs specifically in the RP one district. Which we're not touching, because those sign regulations were approved pursuant to a settlement agreement. These recommendations that we're making, um, really try to do three things. One, they tried to do some basic house cleaning, so there's some typos in the ordinance, some things don't match up, we're trying to take care of that. Uh, the second thing is, we're trying to match the reality of what we're seeing, so. We took a look, by me, I mean my office, working with Sam, took a look at. A number of signage applications that has submitted over the past several years, and organized those based on what they were requesting. And also were they commercial applications or non-residential plant developments? And from there, we saw trends, and like you saw tonight, some of the trends really deal with wall signs and monument signs and freestanding signs. The third thing that we're trying to do with these edits is to get closer to sign neutrality and content neutrality. Uh, I won't go into the whole background of that, but there is a very important Supreme Court case, Reed versus Gilbert, I'm assuming it's pronounced Gilbert, because it's in Arizona. Maybe it's Gilbert, if it was somewhere else, but I want to say Gilbert, um, where, long story short, the Supreme Court basically said that. Townes should not be regulating signs based on their content. Sense, until you start breaking it down. So obviously, if there's a sign for a office right next to a sign for a retail establishment, and they're both in the same zone, in the same street. It might make sense to have those signs have the same type of regulations based on area, dimensions, all that. That would be a content neutral sign, however, when you start regulating signs based on what they're advertising, for example, real estate signs versus political signs versus. Instructional signs versus directory signs. You're technically regulating those signs based on their content, so it's really, really tough to have a ordinance that is completely sign content neutral. But we're attempting to get there, at least in certain portions of the ordinance, so those are really the three major aspects we are trying to balance with this draft ordinance. So we can go through this section by section, it all depends on how the board really wants to address it, but section one of this draft ordinance deals with sign regulations in residential districts. We honestly very rarely ever see those types of applications come up, so that's mostly cleanup work. Uh, section two deals with signs permitted in non-residential districts, that begins on page two of the ordinance. Section three deals with sign regulations for non-residential plant developments, that begins on six, and that deals with the types of signs we heard about tonight. Section four deals with um, sign regulations that are more general throughout the township and really more. Like as generalized in nature. Section five deals with other additional design details for signs. Section six deals with temporary signs, that's actually located in our zoning code. And then section seven also deals with additional regulations regarding um, signs in our redevelopment areas, so. Again, however the board pleases, we can go section by section, discuss different types of signs.
I just wanted to give an overview remark, as most of my colleagues know, on this board, as well as on the zoning board, I have. Often become the sign maven, a- above all the piccadillo concerns about signage, and I, I really appreciate. The, the care and uh, concern that West Windsor has always done in regards to signage. And I'll give you a couple of examples, one example is, I'm gonna give you Edison, New Jersey, now Edison, New Jersey has a Rite Aid. When it was Rite Aid, right on Highway one, and the Edison, New Jersey Rite Aid has a huge Rite Aid letters all over it. Um, which communicated to me that Edison doesn't give a rip about signage size and. And uh, quantity of signs and stuff like that, uh, many of us have traveled that section of Highway one in Edison, New Jersey. And you know how you are bombarded by all signs of shapes and colors and lighting and everything else. To me, that communicates a community that doesn't give a rip about signage and signage controls. Um, yet, I'm gonna give a good example from West Windsor Township, so at Market Fair, across the street from the site we were talking about tonight, there is a theater. And yet, the signage for the AMC is just a small monument sign saying AMC Theaters. What we, what it does not have, and I don't know if it was part of the discussions way back when, it's not like you have a listing of the ten. Movies that are now showing at that, at that theater, multiplex theater, which would take up a sizable space on the highway. Um, so I, I, I laud West Windsor's efforts to control the signage. For like that particular use, so it wasn't, you know, like a billboard sized sign for the establishment. Um, and I, and again, the, with Market Fair came out with their new signage program from the Micro Graves Office, and it was very, was very tastefully done.
Everybody had the AMC app, and they could see what movies are playing, they don't need to see a.
Well, you know, but I'm saying that sign was probably long, they're way before apps, movie apps and stuff like that, Michael, but you're right, you one, doesn't need to have. Have the roadway sign.
Big marquee signs anymore.
Right, exactly, exactly, so uh, I'm very appreciative of the efforts we've put in the past, and I know we're gonna do well in the future.
Okay.
I, I have one question, uh, do we have a definition section of the ordinance?
We do, yes.
It's, it's not part of this.
No, no.
Explain anything that we have.
Uh, no, uh, we were not changing any of the definitions, so those definitions are established in section. Two, wow. Yes, two hundred dash four.
The ordinance that is proposing now, would it cover more, how much percentage, like, like ten years, okay, or like, more like, more than ten years? Every time any applicant comes, they have some waiver for the sign, does it cover all the waivers that we have, we have so far, and every time approved, I, I had any. Discussion, not approving them, so when you this proposing, will it cover all of the. Uh, past ten years or whatever, maybe more, uh, uh, waivers and that we have approved so far?
No, no, it wouldn't, so, and that's a really good question, so. What we try to do when we do these ordinance adjustments is to try to get closer to compliance, right? With the understanding that there's gonna be certain odd situations where. Uh, a larger sign or a different type of sign or a taller sign may be warranted, so for example, tonight is a good case study of that. In this draft order, we're proposing a taller monument sign, uh, specifically, I think we are proposing a monument sign of six feet in height, let's double check that.
We, we've turned down some uh, signage.
No, no, uh, five, so, yeah, we were proposing a monument sign. Tonight, they proposed an app, a, a sign of eight feet in height, but they had a justification for that due to the existing land or the proposed landscaping there, as long as a proximity to Route one. So when we work on these ordinances, we try to. Get things closer to conformance with the understanding that we're never gonna quite get there, we can never really encapsulate everything, because then. What could happen is exactly what Curtis brings up, where we do get those signs that are overly large, like the Rite Aid sign in Edison. So what this tries to do is capture some of the trends that we're seeing, get people closer, try to eliminate some things that would typically require waivers, like, for example. One of the recommendations we're making in certain areas to get rid of that letter height restriction, that would have limited those waivers. But it wouldn't reflect all the waivers that have been granted, it wouldn't cover all of those, it would just get us closer to the mean. Um, nah, not even a percentage, uh.
They still really expect you waivers.
We'll, we'll still, we'll still get waivers, but it will certainly eliminate the need for a lot of waivers, for example, um, we granted a lot of waivers for instructional sign area, right now it's two square feet. I think if this ordinance was in place, obviously the waivers we heard tonight for instructional sign wouldn't have happened. The other ones, I think we would have covered about eighty percent of all instructional sign waiver applications front of this board, uh, directory sign, things like that, we would cover. Probably seventy to eighty percent of those waivers as well. Yeah, monument signs always pops up.
Regarding monument signs, sorry. The, on this application, right, they requested a waiver because. The landscaping is gonna block the letter height if it was only five feet, correct?
Uh, if it was only four feet, yes.
Can the ordinance be something like X number of feet above grade or something, as opposed to eight feet monument sign? Because if you come with an application where there's a six foot berm, well, they're gonna want a ten foot monument sign, otherwise you won't be able to see it on the highway, so, so maybe. Um, it's a better reflection of the ordinance is to have X number of feet above grade.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, that's, that's beyond my. Okay, okay.
And it's technically, it's, it's really kind of the way we measure the sign height, right, we measure it from the grade, the issue they have there is that they're proposing landscaping around the signage. So in that landscape, he's gonna have a higher height than.
Got it.
So.
I think it's better.
Quick question. Okay.
To allow that pressure valve, right, and that's a, it kind of goes to your question as well, so whenever we, we, we saw this again with, too, with the, the Dutch neck study. We'll eventually see it again with the Barren City study, we try to capture enough, or as much as we can.
Right.
But there's always gonna be instances where we can't cover everything, and that's where either you guys or the zoning board come in as a pressure release valve, right, so. You try to come up with these standards for everywhere, there's gonna be certain situations where those, they might not be as applicable, or they might not be as, um. This is might not make sense in that situation, so you guys or the zoning board act of that release valve to allow for a little bit of flexibility in those regulations.
Quick question, maybe I might have missed it, like, is it like a regular review for these kind of things, or some, somebody complained, and that's why we are reviewing the whole?
I got very tired of these signage regulations, no, um.
Just curious.
No, uh, this is something we started this summer, so there's a little bit of a, a lull in activity in terms of development applications as well, so we, we'll have. Would, uh, there is a little bit of a.
I guess I want to make a comment slash question, ask a question, um, I guess the signage or, you know, the, uh, the reason why somebody. Um, I guess the signage or, you know, the, uh, the reason why somebody might seek a waiver would really depend on how the market might be evolving for retail slash commercial establishments. Um, and also, you know, areas in the township which might be more um dense versus, you know, spread out. So, you know, because if, if it's a business who's, who's going to set up shop there, they want to be seen. So if, you know, there's a higher density of retail establishments, you're more likely to be seen if your sign is bigger and therefore there would be a reason to seek a waiver. Because as you very well said, you can't really cover everything, um, you know, in the ordinance.
Exactly. Yes. And that's actually already baked into your ordinance to an extent, right? Because we establish signage regulations for commercial districts, but then there's additional signage regulations established for those planned non-residential developments. And that's typically where you see those more dense types of commercial environments. So if it was a, you know, a standalone building, not a part of a larger development, they would go by those commercial sign regulations, which for the most part are a little bit more strict. The non-residential ones allow for a little bit more of a greater sign intensity with that understanding that you're going to be in a commercial environment, so you might need that slightly larger sign to better direct you where you're going. Um, so it is baked in a little bit. We're trying to accentuate that a little bit more. Um, but also at the same time, looking at the Princeton Junction area. So one of the first recommendations I made was, you know, to get rid of those letter heights because we always see that. I remember the, um, what's the chicken place there? Chick-fil-A application. They had to get a waiver from the letter height because they had that little stupid thing on top of the rooster head that was increasing the letter height.
Also with Chick-fil-A, they were, uh, to go to Jodica's point, they were farther off the road and behind the Wawa.
Yeah.
So it's not like they really had road visibility.
Exactly, yes, which one of the waivers that they had granted was the additional freestanding sign out front too. Um, but for the Princeton Junction area, because the township has been trying to craft a more intimate, I'll call it downtown environment there, like where the Ellsworth Center is and where the Rite Aid is. I didn't eliminate that letter height requirement because typically in the downtown, you might want to see smaller letters. Um, trying to create a more cozy environment there. So all of those factors play a role in how you try to regulate signs throughout an area.
Like the new technology, like I know like twenty years ago, we needed to look at a sign. Now I just, somebody asked me, how did you come here? I said, I just followed my GPS.
I know, it, yep.
Need that, do we want to think about that we, we don't need big signs?
So there is a, there's a site in West Windsor above the, what is that, the Rite Aid? Princeton Heistown Road, right?
Walgreens now.
Walgreens, I'm sorry, Walgreens. Yeah, that vacant property, that, yeah, there's, yeah, they, I mean, they haven't developed that area because of that sign availability there. So it is a very interesting dichotomy because these things really do guide where everybody's going. But there still seems to be a dependency on those physical signs that really draw you into the area. One could be because this will get you to the general area of what you're looking for. But while you're driving, you really want to see where that sign actually is. So presumably it'll, it'll get you in the location, but you want that physical sign to know this is exactly where I need to turn.
I'm here.
Yes.
Kind of like I'm here.
So tomorrow, um, I'm actually sleeping over in West Windsor tonight because I have zoning board here tomorrow night. Staying at a hotel because I'm a masochist. I decided to sign up for a, uh, CrossFit class down the road and somewhere on Route one at six o'clock in the morning. So I'll be driving there, using my GPS on my phone to get there. But lord knows, I'm not going to know where that spot is until I actually see the freestanding sign out front. Um, so this will get you to the general area, but I think signage still plays a very important role to actually drawing you in as well as attracting client base who might not know that they're actually looking for that business.
GPS says you have radio destination is closed.
But David, there's also the, the, the really crazy situation we have at the uh, corner of Wallace Road and the Princeton Heistown Road where you've got the Ellsworth sign. Now you've got the Ellsworth sign, you've got Duncan in big letters. And then in very small letters, listing ten to twelve establishments.
Yeah.
At, at probably not even six inches high, you've got all these other establishments that you cannot read if you're going at highway speed.
No, you're a hundred percent correct. Um, those letters are very small. I think that the ordinance was designed to really gear that type of signage to pedestrian traffic. So hopefully once, yeah, so hopefully once you get some additional residences there.
Slapping pedestrian in traffic.
I know, I know. Pedestrian, let me rephrase that, pedestrian foot traffic. Yes, um. This is why I love talking about signage. One of my favorite types of signs, there's uh neon signs. And no town ever permits a neon sign. I don't put it in the ordinance, obviously, but I went through the Oh.
Fine, good point.
Wild was playing up. All right, that's true, that's true.
They'll have, they have neon all over the place.
I was at the sign museum.
And they revel in it.
I was at the sign museum in Cincinnati, Ohio. Don't ask me why I was in Cincinnati, uh, but they had a separate neon area, which was very cool. Las Vegas has, oh yeah, the bone, yeah, the boneyard, yep.
But in terms of lighting technologies, a lot of those neon signs have been replaced with LED.
I know, it's a shame.
Sort of neon.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I, I just like that old fashioned type of neon signage.
Yeah, but then what happens when one of the part of the neon goes out and that gets replaced?
Then it turns into a horror movie when it starts blinking.
You want to bait Bates Motel. I had some questions, but we can, I can, would you prefer me to go through my questions? Um, or wait till you get to the page where my question is located?
We, is everybody who have questions? If you have, people have questions, then point it out.
Okay. Okay, uh, I'll, I'll let my colleagues go if they have questions first.
And the only way, what we'll do is we'll go page by page. Page one is dealing with residential signs. Nothing really changes in this one. This is just cleaning up the table in the ordinance. There are some codification errors. Uh, page two, when it comes to residential signs, we are providing some additional standards for non-residential uses located in residential district. As of right now, there are no sign regulations for that. So this is just establishing some controlling measures for a non-residential use in residential district, like a house of worship, for example, it's one of the more common non-residential uses you'll find in our residential districts.
Okay, I have a question on page three.
On page three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, red letter four, red four. Letters shall project a maximum of six inches. What does that exactly mean? Is that the lighting projection?
No, that's actually the physical projection of those letters. So if there are cut letters on a wall, they can't go further past.
Three dimensional letter instead of
Exactly, yes.
Maybe be more specific that, you know, I don't know how you how you could describe it. Cause I, you're talking about lighting and then it says project. I wasn't sure if you meant the, the lighting projects three, six inches or No, I know, okay. Um, maybe it's just me.
No, 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 no. If, the, what we can maybe change that is the depth of letters or the width of letters, something like that.
Thank you.
Question, you know, on page two, wall sign, signage. What you are saying here that one sign permitted each face of the building. Then I say a maximum two, this is more, normal building of four faces.
Yes.
So you are only on two faces now?
Yeah, so right now we only allow for one wall sign per business. Uh, what this would allow is a wall sign for each frontage that faces a public or private street or parking area. But we don't want to necessarily allow for, you know, signs, a multitude of signs, so we're limiting the number to two. So basically what this would allow for is if a if there's a freestanding commercial business and say it has surrounded by parking areas on three sides or four sides, right now they would only be allowed one sign, this would up it to two. So it's just a little bit more flexibility.
So, so like in the Blackrock Building, when they came before the board and we gave them the one sign facing, oh, we wouldn't, right?
That'll be a little bit different because that is regulated as a non-residential planned development. So that'll be actually in the next section following this one. This is more of like a small scale business.
Would, would you allow a second sign for that building in, in the new ordinance?
Uh, I, you know what? They're already allowed to have multiple signs.
Okay.
Yes.
I think they only have one, right?
Yeah, they're only proposing the one on the front.
Um, continue, I didn't have any.
Okay.
Yeah, we are, page two, three. On page three.
Yes, page.
My next question is on page five.
Uh, page three, uh, again, one of the recommendations we're making is regarding monument signs and ground mounted project ten identification signs. Based on the waivers that have been requested in the past, increase in the maximum area of a ground mounted project ten identification sign from uh, up to sixty-five square feet and then allowing a such, one such sign at each driveway entrance.
David, with that, the ground mounted project ten identification, that's basically a freestanding sign?
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's a stanchion sign that has the, uh, multiple tenants on there. Why do they call it that? I don't know. I, the, the, unique for me as well.
Let's say the new standard is more flexible. And somebody who already has approved application under the new standard is allowed a, say, second sign as he asks. Can they just go ahead and put it or they have to still come back to the planning?
Sam, I think they still have to come to the planning board for that. If it was in a planned commercial development or if it's a commercial business.
If it's, if it's in a commercial development, they have to move the wall, come into
That, but see, that plan is approved. Now the new ordinance makes it more
And they'll probably get approved because it's under the new ordinance allows for it.
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be treated as a minor site plan, right? If it was, if there were no site plan application, if it's just a waiver for signage.
So, I'm just trying to understand. So, under new ordinance, a building, let's say a Blackrock would be allowed under the new ordinance to put in a second sign on the bed?
No, well, no, because Blackrock would be considered a
Just, just use
Oh, as, okay, as a hypothetical, yes.
So you're going to make them come before the planning, they just want one sign that's conforming to the new ordinance, put it on the building, and you're going to make them come before the planning board? There's a new act with the sign waiver requirement and application as opposed to like a fast track kind of something?
But they don't need a waiver to use the code that says within planned commercial development, you don't need a comprehensive sign.
I, I mean, but if they come before the board before the comprehensive sign, you know, signage development part of their overall site plan development? And the only thing they're changing is, hey, I noticed you changed the sign ordinance and everybody's putting two, four signs on their buildings facing the public roads. I can, I'd like to put another sign on my building, okay? Um, get a minor site plan development, get an applicant, hire a lawyer, planning, architect, landscape architect, come before the planning board. I don't, I personally don't think they should have
We can change the code. It says they don't have to do that.
I mean, I, I feel the same way. I mean, it's
I know, no, I mean, everybody, you know, it's a waste of time, expense for the applicant and the waste of that time that we're going to improve it anyway because it, it would be the, if that was the only thing on the agenda, it would be the fastest meeting in the history of West Windsor. Cause it would be a thirty second thing. What, what do you want to do? Put a sign on? Okay, it means it's done. So I think it'd be a waste of
So it would be more of an administrative, with, administrative change. Uh, like Michael's, taking Michael's scenario, administrative change as opposed to a board decision.
Sam, it's only one time that you can
I, I was just going to add that the administrator be the one to decide that that is part of these comprehensive signage project or, or plan that had been previously approved and then grant the, the permit.
Well, wouldn't have been because it, it didn't have a second sign.
Oh, right, but what I'm saying is part of, it, it fits into the
Make sure that materials and design that match
That, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so I think what we're saying is if there's a application for uh, a completely conforming sign, no waivers required, it's height, size, location.
New ordinance.
Uh, I, I, I think what the board is recommending is that if there's a completely conforming sign to
This is only for existing commercial, they, they are already approved. No, he's talking about new applicants.
Oh, no, no, if it's new application, I'm not talking about new application.
Okay, so.
Not about new application.
No, no, not if it's new application, they have every, they have to do everything else. I'm talking about you know, five years ago, it's, the building's built, we only allowed one sign, you know, twelve square feet, whatever it is. Um, and now we allow for a second sign or larger height. Maybe they want to replace their sign to larger letters and more square feet. Maybe they want to put a second sign facing a different major road. They've already been, everything's been approved. The only thing they want to do is conforming to the new existing ordinance that allows for either a second sign or replace their existing sign, and it's the only change and it's
Yeah, so for example, like tonight, they got the approval for their side, the, the building. If this ordinance gets adopted and two years down the road, they say, hey, you know what? We want another monument sign and with the new ordinance that would be permitted, that could be something that's done administratively.
Exactly.
Got it, Anderson.
Waste everybody's time here and expense for the applicant to hire a lawyer. Lawyers make too much money as it is.
You know, I think we can all agree.
Except for present company.
Of course.
You, you, you see my, you see my point. My point is that it's a waste of time, money and energy to approve something that is going to take less than five minutes to like, oh yeah, it's conforming, okay, go ahead, prove it.
So we have, have to have them write it into the
I, I think so.
We'll find a way to wordsmith something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
Good points, Michael, thank you.
Um, what page are we on?
Uh, page three, after I go, because I know you
I'm sorry.
We're on page three right now.
Okay. Anybody have, any comments? All right, I, I just have one comment.
Mm-hmm.
It's a pet peeve of mine in terms of flags. I mean, I've seen the abuse of flags, American flags used for advertising purposes. Prime example is Route two oh two, uh, near Flemington.
Yep, yep.
And, I mean, there, it's obscene. It really is. It's passed off as patriotic in its total bulk. It's really advertising for the car dealerships. So I guess the question I have is, I know the height of the flag pole, which would be twenty feet, will limit to some extent the size of the, uh, flags. But then you have a five, you're basically not regulating the size of national flags. So can we come to any terms on that, uh, put in a maximum size that would be fitting with a twenty foot high scale pole, so it would be to scale.
The next one says maximum flag area is twenty square feet?
No, no.
It accepts
It accepts national flag.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, you have an, you have an oddity with your ordinance, and this popped up, I remember with the Chick-fil-A application.
It accepts the West Windsor flag.
Yeah, obviously that's something he'd be done, right? Um, the amendment to the ordinance was designed to reflect the existing definition of flag in the ordinance. Mm-hmm. It's a very odd definition because it specifically excludes national state, county or municipal flags.
Well, maybe we should include that.
Mm-hmm. I mean, that's, you know.
I mean, I, I, I'm just
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I'd hate to have that happen on Route one or whatever.
I mean, if you put a thirty square feet flag, you're not more patriotic than twenty square feet. So we just take five.
But David, David, has there been, has there been a New Jersey case law that has actually had to deal with flag size issues?
No. I, I've never seen.
I would, I would imagine so, and my thinking is that this may trigger a first, first amendment issue, but I, I would want to
Well.
Look into that unless, David, you're Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
We could definitely tag him on that. I'll take a look.
First amendment is only for American flag, not for West Windsor flag or some private flag?
I don't know how you could limit it to, to American flags, but, but again, this, this, it's a regulation of if it's a regulation of content.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's usually not permitted. You can't regulate content. Um, under maybe very limited circumstances when a regulation applies to all signs. But I think this, this would be problematic for that reason.
So why not then just eliminate five and keep it, uh, one through four?
And we would have to, uh, we would also have to go back and And we would have to, uh, we would also have to go back and amend the definition of flag, and you wouldn't see, see just a new section in this ordinance.
But we'll have to.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure there's gotta be something. I only fly the uh Jolly Roger myself, so.
And and there's no size or height of flag pole for national flags?
As of right now, no, it's completely unregulated.
Well, are we allowed to restrict that or no?
I think that's what Martin, yeah, we're gonna look into.
We're not, um, you know, the first. Yeah, I'm sure it does. Didn't someone come before the board recently that they're?
Chick-fil-A.
Which one?
Chick-fil-A.
Put like a fifty-foot flag.
Yep.
See, Sam, I don't, I don't see how it could be a first amendment issue, it could be because you're not limiting content, you're just limiting.
Well, I think what Martina's saying is if you allow for a sign, like a corporate flag to be. A certain square footage, but allow for a national flag to be another square footage, is that now regulating the sign area or the flag area based on whatever the content is explaining?
Well, as long as they're the same size. Okay.
I know we jumped around, uh, anything on page four that had some changes regarding awning and canopy signs? Uh, directory signs, which was a the the source of consternation for. One of our applications recently.
Regarding just, let's let's envision the legs, the flag signage on ten versus the one on five. Page ten, I know we haven't, I'm I'm sorry, page, page ten, no, page nine. Where I just.
Six nine has.
Yeah.
Looks the same here, Chris.
Yeah, it should be no change uh or no difference other than. The blind side, uh, the flag signage regulations in the earlier section regulates. Signs in commercial districts, this regulates signs in planned non-residential developments.
So I guess the same comment.
It'd be the same comment, yeah, follow over.
I mean, we, uh, it, uh, on page four, it talks about window lettering, but uh there elsewhere in the document. It deals with, you know, flashing signs and stuff like that, right?
Yes, yeah. Flashing signs.
It's always been a a concern to me at Windsor Plaza that some of the vendors, you know, have flashing signs or. Or like the gas station at Highway one and the circle, you know, that that's, they still have flashing signs.
Um, let me get that up. I believe that flashing signs are prohibited.
That, you have that, I think in later in the document, as a exceptions.
Yep.
Or whatever.
Yeah, uh, signs which flash or are accented by flash for time. See highway lights, that's prohibited throughout this township.
Yeah, you have a list with prohibitions.
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, um, we also on the bottom of page five added sign regulations for gas.
You're not changing nameplate sign signage, it's still half a square foot?
Which one?
On page five. I three. You're leaving as it is, half a square foot, which is a very small area.
It is a very small area, I have never seen a nameplate sign uh application yet, so we can increase it, I just.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And three square meters. Yeah.
Half a square foot. Okay.
To go, I I haven't seen, I haven't seen an application yet for. Coincidentally, uh, window signs.
Things five are.
Okay. So if someone came and said they wanted a um one-foot-square nameplate sign, we probably, we probably would approve it. Well, part of a other, part of a um overall application.
Or maybe they just put it up without the benefit of approval.
So David, when this. Uh, ordinance provisions don't deal with, cause I don't see how they could, it's the the um strategically placed truck. In.
Oh, not prohibited, yeah, I, yep.
It is a provision.
That is one of my signage, uh.
So so you can place your business truck in the parking lot?
At at the road for, for both sides can be seen.
Sorry, say again.
Exactly, I was gonna say Capua knows has that.
Making an. It's cause the guy's enforcement agent. Okay. I like their, I like their pizza.
Yeah, I know, but I think Curtis, what you're talking about, you're talking about those. The vehicles that are specifically designed to be basically a moving billboard.
No, no.
Oh, no.
Say like a little delivery truck that when it's not in use. Right at the roadway so that traffic on the roadway can see the signage upon.
Okay, I was thinking.
No, no, just. The basic, you know, signage of the, that's on the truck.
Got it.
Delivery truck that can be seen on both directions, that's what you're talking about.
And it really works, because every time I see it, I pull in and get pizza.
I don't, but no, but so there's a name type of regulation on that, is there, David?
Uh, there is a regulation regarding signage on vehicles.
But no, but the, yeah, but that's, I'm talking about the parking of a vehicle, that's what becomes the sign.
So.
That's beyond us working.
No, no, I mean, under primitive signs, we have signs which are designed to move either by mechanical or other means. Signs which are portable, self-supporting, without firmly embedded in the ground, supported by another object or mounted on wheels. Signs placed on vehicles or trailers which are parked or located for the primary purpose of displaying said sign. This, but it doesn't not uh uh apply to signs or lettering on buses, taxi or vehicles operating during the normal course of business, so. If you're parking the vehicle out there for the primary purpose of just displaying the said sign, it will not be permitted.
Would not be permitted.
Would not be permitted.
Where are you in the document on this?
Uh, that would be on page ten.
Page ten?
Yeah, page ten, item two. I don't know anyone.
I know, no, but I I I did it, I, cause it was on my mind. I wasn't following the sequence.
No, that's okay, um, yeah, page five. I had mentioned, we added uh regulations regarding automobile service station canopies. Right now, there's no regulations for signs or gas stations like that. So.
Do we restrict the size of the side of the uh, uh, gas station canopies?
We uh restricted it basically to the height and the width of the canopy, uh, we could come up with a percentage of it as well, um. I was just trying to follow, if you guys remember, we had worked on a redo of Omniplan for um. Along Route one. And uh basically, we based those regulations on that concept plan. For uh canopy signage.
So in essence, Sunoco could be written.
Across the, yeah.
Across the entirety of.
Could be fifty percent, maybe, could be thirty percent.
I don't know, what what have we been approving? Entirety or?
Well, the one that's in the pension that we developed period would allow what we're showing.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of other gas station applications.
Same one, Al Sunoco did put up new canopies, uh, you know, with with the the blue and yellow Sunoco sign. Yeah, no, no, but no, I think I think they did it with the last five, six years, so it looks like a new canopy. You know, new, uh, but but they they probably, they didn't come for us, so I guess it met, it met the code.
Well, keep in mind, when they, when they redid the gas station thirty years ago, it was in the B two district. And then when they renovated, it was the B two oval district. Now it's in the redevelopment district, so the sign regulations are all over the place.
Yeah, but I don't remember that with the new canopy at the Sunoco station even becoming an agenda.
Well, it may have been compliance.
That's my point, that's.
You know, I think, I think what we had to do is apply, they they, that was a lot of back and forth, I think we had to apply the. Canopy regulations to that canopy, which. Sounds like it makes sense, but the township's existing canopy regulations are really geared towards canopies and awnings, like not really a gas station canopy. Um. That being said, though, we can certainly provide like a percentage of the extent of the the width of the. The canopy.
Think something reasonable.
Yeah, I can do a little bit of research too, it's all over the place with towns, but um I can find a percentage. Free Dave, we'll take a look. Uh, following the next page, we have the regulations for non-residential plan development. Uh, this begins on page six. One of the changes that we really wanted to focus on is how we regulate the area of signs. Um, right now, we. Regulate the area of signs based on the distance between the building to the nearest right-of-way. This has caused a lot of consternation because oftentimes we'll get these applications where you have a building where the backside. Might be twenty feet away from a right-of-way. But the sign is. Located on a wall that's internally focused and further away from a private roadway or circulation aisle. Yet because of that standard, they're held to that more stringent requirement. So this often happens in Nassau Park, Nassau Pavilion, businesses that might have frontage along that road that goes in the middle. Could be thirty feet away from that roadway. The signage is really facing the other way towards the parking lot, but because of that regulation, the way it's written right now, the sign is only. Allowed to be fifty square feet in size, so that's a waiver that we see pop up over and over and over again, it was actually popped up here again tonight. So the recommendation that we're making is rather than measure it from the building, the closest portion of the building to the right-of-way. Measuring it from the distance between the public and or private roadway and the wall of the building to which the sign is to be attached. Um. We're keeping the same distances, we're keeping the same areas, um, we're keeping the same maximum sign areas, we're just really revising the language for how we measure that. Rather be the closest portion of the building to the right-of-way, having it be the portion of the wall of which the sign is attached. And the distance of that to the nearest public or private right of the roadway. And that'll hopefully solve that issue of those buildings that back up on the public right-of-ways.
You're, you're page, page seven, I just a question now?
Yeah, there, we can go to page seven.
Okay. Uh, I think C from the top. The A B C, right? Uh, it's not clear, the maximum amounts, moment sign height, including the structure and sign area shall be five feet above existing grade. You're talking bottom of the sign or top of the sign?
Bottom, yep, bottom to the top, so. Where that sign base hits the ground to the tallest portion of it.
To the top of the sign, you're talking five feet out of the grade?
Yep.
Okay. Question regarding five feet.
Yes.
Should that be six feet?
Yeah, it turns out.
It could be.
The only reason why I say that, right, if you think about it. Person just standing there. You know, they're probably, if it's five feet. You know, maybe they're not gonna, I don't know, maybe it's too low.
Six is good.
It could be six feet, it could be eight feet, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
But I I think.
Eight feet's a little big.
Yeah, I think six.
Yeah, six will be, it's better.
Now, would you like that changed for monument signs just in non-residential plan developments or also for monument signs in commercial districts as well?
Are the, do you have the same five feet for both?
Yep, we can keep it consistent.
It should be six feet, I don't know.
Yeah, I said six is better.
Don't go by me, I'm just. Five feet seems too short.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Do you mean if you're standing next to it, you're sort of looking down?
Yeah.
Rather than just acting.
Uh, and and rather than like eye level or looking upside.
Yeah, six makes sense.
Yeah, maybe six.
The 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 letter height can be, it doesn't, it's at the tippy top of the monument anyway, so it's it's adjusted. You know, downward according to grade, right? I don't know, just a thought, I'm throwing it out to everybody.
No, I mean, we've gotten, um, I think six is probably makes sense, I was going five just to be a little more conservative, but. We've had applications for, let's see, seven point seven feet, six feet, six feet. So.
So if it, if you're getting things for six feet, that eliminates all those waivers and then. Anything above that, well, in this case, it was eight feet because of the grading issue. Right, so that, I mean, there's justification and it makes sense, six feet would eliminate a lot of waivers.
I would agree.
And it kind of makes sense, cause then you're more looking eye level or or up slightly.
Yeah, no disagreement for me.
Okay.
Okay, that was uh page seven, so we can.
Yes, page seven.
And then you'd have to adjust it for the other.
Yeah, I went, yep. I already made that note. Uh, page eight, again, these changes that we made for awnings and canopies match the same that we made in the other district as well. Uh, page nine.
We're talking about a percentage for the.
Yes, yeah.
And we're talking about the national.
Oh, well, the, yeah, so the. That percentage for the canopies would be for the gas station canopies on page nine, I'll do the same thing.
Uh, I'm going back one page to eight.
Uh-oh.
Uh, number six, uh, D, that window lettering and signs shall have a professional appearance, isn't that like a value judgment? I mean, that's. Subjective, yeah, that's my point, right?
Uh, it is, it is, yep, I can't, yeah, we can definitely take, I mean.
Deal with it, I'm just throwing it out there.
You don't want somebody just writing a crayon.
How long has that been in the ordinance? Has anyone ever challenged it?
Oh, so it's always been there, fifty years? It's not like you, Mike, it's not like you put it in there.
I think it, I think it should stay, to tell you the truth. Cause you got some people out there that.
It's very subjective, what what does it mean?
What? We haven't had a, if we haven't had a problem, then why?
Yeah, no one's.
Yeah, it's him, how many applications have we got for window lettering?
Right, so.
So if someone, if if some, um, if somebody came before the board and the sign. That the window lettering sign seemed, it had cartoon characters. We would say that's not professional and say, sorry, we can't prove it, it's not professional.
Well, you know what, maybe there's a different language we can use, um, rather than professional appearance, maybe something along the lines of shall be maintained in good order or or something along that line, so you're not getting a. A ripped up piece of cardboard in the.
It it, well, that's the, that's the thing that you're trying to prevent, you don't want somebody to come in with a ripped up piece of cardboard. Masking tape, putting it up, if that really cheapens the appearance.
Sounds like you guys are checking out my office.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's. But.
But maybe something along the lines.
I don't know why anybody would do that with their business, but you never know.
But but I mean, I could see the value judgment on this, I mean, you think of the whole world of the of uh the last ten years with. You know, Mason, the whole Mason jar aesthetic with hay bales and live, love, laugh. You know, I mean, I mean, honestly, is that professional appearance? I, again, it's a value judgment. You know, Rob was what I'm talking about.
All right, we can take a look at it, maybe it's something along the lines of maintained in good condition or something like that, that. Is a little bit more of a sterile language. Shall be, yeah. Yeah, we can follow up on that. Uh, on page nine, I already had the note, we will research and coordinate with uh Martina regarding flag signage.
Yep.
And then same thing with the canopy signage on the top of page ten, we'll look at a percentage that would uh be appropriate.
On page eleven, you have one C, two, we can do six feet also, all right?
Oh, I've I've hit item C, uh, yes, well. That would be a discussion point with the board, right? So this regulates the height of signs within residential districts unless otherwise established. So if you guys want to allow for a six-foot height, say for like a house of worship or for a nonprofit located in a residential zone. That would allow for a height of six feet there.
Um, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, um, on page ten, can you explain um number seven?
Before you explain seven, can you explain um four and five?
New four. New four and five or old four and five?
Four and five.
Signs which flash, starting with that one?
Yeah.
Okay, so these are signs that are prohibited. So signs which flash.
Where does that, where does it say prohibited? I don't.
Previous page.
Previous.
No, so, uh, yeah, so this section. Yep, prohibited signs, yes. So four and five, you cannot have any sign which emits odors or smoke or flashes.
I missed the word prohibited, so I didn't realize.
No, and then I'm sorry, which one?
Well, seven.
Number seven, okay, yes, so, um, this is language that deals specifically with where signs can be located in relationship to a site triangle. This revises a language slightly, so this session had originally tried to define what it considered to be a site triangle, which is really when you pull up to an intersection, you look left, you look right, how far you can see and whether or not that's obstructed or not. This section basically came up with its own definition and also referred to the master plan. What we're recommending is that it just refers to section two hundred dash fifty seven E and then two twenty nine A one. Both of those deal with sign or site triangles. So really what all does is that it links it up to other sections of the ordinance that establish site triangle regulations. So it's just.
It's not really.
Exactly, yes, yes. So the whole idea is to make it more, um, consistent with those sections so that way everything is, everybody's kind of on the same page and the last thing you want to do is block somebody's visibility when they're making a left or right.
But what do they say? So, so we have an understanding of what this is saying, really?
In, in terms of site triangles?
Yes, uh, yeah, so two hundred dash fifty seven E. Um, site triangles, in addition to right of way widths required for the full length of streets and wider intersections as specified above, site triangles shall be dedicated as follows. The area bounded by the right of way lines in a straight line connecting site points on a street center lines, which are the following distances from the intersection of the center lines. Uh, one, where a local street intersects another local street, ninety feet. Where a local street intersects a collector street or minor arterial, ninety feet in the local and two hundred feet in the collector or minor arterial. Or where a local collector or minor arterial intersects a major or principal arterial street, ninety feet back in the local collector or minor arterial streets and three hundred feet back on the major or principal arterial street. It makes, it makes complete sense, right? Yeah, there, those, those street classifications are in there and then typically take an engineering analysis for what that triangle needs to look like. I'm, I can't tell you.
I mean, the whole idea is not to block the driver's view.
Yep.
And going into the, it's too bad we don't have something with regard to vegetation. Yes, a lot of people, we do have it? All right. Stand corrected.
Property law, you want to talk to them about that?
John, see you all. He's been very busy this year.
Okay, there's a lot of people that just put the shrub, I mean, they're nice shrubs, but you can't see when you're trying to make a left turn.
We had a case where, um, in one of my tasks where somebody put up ten or twelve foot shrubs on a jointy property line because they hated their neighbor and there's no regulation against the height of the shrub like that, so it was like a wall.
Uh, page, page ten.
Yes.
Uh, revised number three. Of mounted or portable search lighting. Now, I know this is in the section of prohibited signs. Does that curtail uh, an event planner who's doing a special event at the Hyatt Regency not to have searchlights out in front on the evening of an event?
It would prohibit it, yes. They would have to get.
That's only. Oh, no, these are the, they're going more like in a big circle. And, but, but I've, I've seen with, uh, uh, over the years at the, only at the Hyatt Regency.
Technically, they would require a waiver to do that, um.
But have they ever applied for? Well, I mean, I, but I'm not complaining about it. I'm just saying, I, I know what happens in West Windsor. Then the event's over, you know, it's done.
Then they say one lane.
Exactly, yeah.
They put in the party already.
But let's, let's move on.
Okay.
Those planning for the second way.
Um, page eleven. This gets into more supplemental sign regulations.
Good luck.
Page twelve, we.
But I recommend we stop twelve because section six plus that temporary signs and then we go on the signs of the redevelopment area. The temporary signs.
Yeah, there's a lot of cha, yeah, so we can queue that up for next time. Um, there's a lot of, just to set the stage for that. Okay. We, yeah, now we'll save.
There's a paragraph on that towards the end of the document.
We'll, we'll save it for next time.
That was good.
Yes. But thank you. So I'm going to start working on some of these revisions. I will hold off though on sharing another document until we have that other meeting. Talk about this that way. It's all done in one. It's not super confusing.
So Sam, this is in a GED item in two weeks? Yeah, yeah. It is, so the continuation to two weeks.
I think we should, you mean, the board? I think let's, let's have the call tomorrow and maybe if we, yeah, we can do, I think that would.
And David, one last question. Are there any leftover elements, planning, planning document elements that still need to be addressed? Stormwater, is there a timetable on that?
About that, he has a, so I think Fran has another consultant that is going to be taking a look at that document because honestly, a lot of it is over typical planning stuff. Um, so we did a little bit of a, the bare bones of the plan and I believe the last time we we chatted, he was gonna send it over to his consultant to look at. So I don't have any timeframe. Yeah.
So we're holding off, we're holding on. I get it.
And the, the last, yeah, and the funny thing is the last template that the DEP came out for a stormwater management plan was back in two thousand and four, I want to say. So it's been quite some time.
Twenty years.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good meeting, guys.
Meeting adjourned. The next meeting is seventeen.
Yeah, it's crazy stuff.
I mean, you know, I, I.
Well, when you get into.
That takes, that big case.
Are, are, no matter what they're used for.
Yeah.
They are a form of, you know, for speech.